All right. I'm going to call the February 11th, 2025, meeting of the Carmel Planning Commission to order, and it is four o'clock. So can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Alborn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Mel Page is absent.
Thank you. So I am acting Chair today, and I do want to introduce our new Commissioner, Mel Alborn, right? And so she, this is her first meeting with us. So welcome. So, under the Brown Act, public comments for matters on the agenda must relate to the agenda item, and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending the meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act meeting, that speaker will be muted. And our first item of business is the public appearances. So, members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes. Matters not appearing on the agenda will not have action taken at this meeting, but may be referred to staff. And people are not required to give your name, but it is helpful if you do so that we can identify speakers when we have the minutes prepared. So, do we have any public comments today? Neil?
My name is Bob Dillon.
Hi, Bob.
Neil Cruz. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the Mission Street residents.
Regarding the Hermel Collins Project, DS 24207 heard on November 13th by this commission. They're not happy. The residents delivered their unsigned letter electronically to the city on the Thursday before the meeting, and assigned hard copy with 62 signatures one day before the meeting. Neither of these letters were delivered to the commissioners before the meeting started. In fact, they did not see these letters in their hand until two or three minutes before they began to make their comments after the break. In essence, the commissioners made their comments without having read the letter signed by 62 members of the, of the Mission Street residents group. So, how much can you read in two to three minutes when you have seven pages of text? Some of the comments that were given afterwards by the commissioners to the architect include, and I'll quote from Commissioner Dels, he said, "I think you have to convene a gathering of your neighbors." I went and I watched the video, and so these are direct quotes. I mean, 62 of them just signed something that said, "No, I think you've got to start over here." Keeping in mind, at this point, the commission thinks what's, the application is about one house. Everybody in the room thinks you've read the letter, so it's about all three houses. Can, can you see how there was a disconnect there in their perception between the residents and the commission? Chairman Lapage says, "It seems like the second story is not going to work for the neighborhood here." The residents advised me that a new design had been shown to staff by the architect, and that none of the residents, according to Tom Morgick, who was asked most of them, have ever been contacted by the architect. There's been zero connection between the architect and the residents. In addition to that, the design shown to staff is a two-story house in direct contravention to the chairman Lapage's direction that it be limited to one story. So, what we have here is the residents do not feel that they have been heard appropriately and correctly at this stage of the game. I went to the minutes of the meeting to check how the minutes read, and there was only one sentence in the minutes. And it was, "The commission gave direction to the architect to resubmit the project considering the comments received from the public." No mention in the minutes that he was directed to have a meeting with the neighbors. No mention in the minutes that he, it was suggested to him to limit the design to one story. So, in the end, the way I, I see this, we need to redo this process. The residents have not been treated correctly. Their, their comments of 62 signatures were not read and understood by the commission when they made their comments. I would like to suggest that when you meet again in November 12th, you reframe this application to include the entire project, including all three houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Are there any other public appearances this time? Would you please approach?
Hi, everyone. I'm Tori LaCompton. This is Colette LaCompton. We're both Carmel residents. We live over in Northwest Carmel on, on Lopez Avenue. And my young children and I, we walk down the Jane Powers Walkway to San Antonio Avenue to go to the beach very often. It's a wonderful path, and we feel lucky to share it with so many Carmel residents and other young families and people who take the same daily route as us. And I just wanted to raise, have you ever considered putting a crosswalk on San Antonio at the bottom of Jane Powers Walkway? It would provide a valuable safety precaution against traffic zipping from, to and from Pebble Beach. The walkways down San Antonio to Scenic all have crosswalks indicated with just paint, and I hope you consider this in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. LaCompton, let me connect with you because we actually have a traffic safety committee. That's not the purview of the planning commission. It's the planning director, the public works director, and the police chief. They meet quarterly to take advice from residents on ideas like that. So, let me connect with you, and I'll tell you how to send something to them. They can put on their next agenda.
Okay, super. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we can move to, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, guys.
Jumped the gun there. Chuck Najarian, I'd like to discuss the permitting process generally. And first, I just want to note the developers are in the permitting process driver's seat, from what I can see and observe, and they're steering the wheel. Residents are in the backseat, and they're along for the ride. I think avoiding and misusing SEQA is the basis for this. The fact that you've exempted everything from SEQA, single-family homes, the Haas's house, the pit, they're all treated the same. Impacts associated with construction phases are ignored, as are cumulative impacts. Your permitting process is on autopilot. But I've got some suggestions today, and I hope you take them seriously. I think it would help if developers submitted what they wanted to build, not a concept. I think the concept design aspect should be moved to what I'll refer to as a pre-filing public workshop. And that workshop would allow for give and take, as opposed to three minutes. And I think that would be helpful to improve the application. I think it should emphasize conformity with the governing documents, and I think it should emphasize input of the public. The, the better the permit application, the easier job. SEQA should be triggered upfront as soon as a complete permit application is filed. If SEQA applicability is unclear, you should err on the side of environmental safety, public health and safety. Please stop excluding construction impacts. That's where most of the adverse, adverse impacts occur. Stop excluding cumulative impacts of other foreseeable projects, particularly projects that are, are going to be under construction in the same timeframes. These exclusions, exclusions lead to misuse of exemptions. They violate SEQA and favor developer interests. Importantly, SEQA requires cost of environmental review be borne by the project applicant, not the public. You should take advantage of this. It benefits the city, and it benefits the, the residents. The ongoing issue with these three modern houses that Mr. Cruz referred to, I think a lot of that could have been avoided. I think we could be in a better place now. It, it was essentially assumed that residents' privacy and view sheds can be taken. And I referred to the application and the process to date. It was assumed construction impacts weren't an issue. It was assumed a modern design was appropriate for a traditional neighborhood with nine historic homes. It was assumed the three homes could be piecemealed and not considered as one project under SEQA, a strictly prohibited tactic. And all that does is result in more exemptions. In closing, the city has put up, I think, inappropriate roadblocks to implementing SEQA. And I think it's, to the benefit of the city, if you tried to remove some of those, because I don't think they're all appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Do we have any other comments in chambers? Seeing none. Cindy Lloyd, I see you have your hand up. Can you unmute yourself, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. And my name is Cindy Lloyd. I am, I was born and raised in Carmel, down in the Golden Triangle, kind of as it's what is referred to now, on property my grandparents bought in 1911. But I now live in the sphere of influence in Carmel Woods, offering me a wonderful opportunity to garden at my leisure, which is my pastime. I have about a third of an acre which lovely overlooks the oak canopy to the ocean and a little bit of point loba. But my reason for speaking this, this morning, whoops, this afternoon, is that I want to welcome Mel to the planning commission and Anna as planning director, and thank all the members of the commission for all your hard work. I know it's a lot of research, a lot of time, a lot of consideration, but thank you for doing what you do to protect and maintain Carmel. And I also want to thank the planning staff that consistently does excellent research into projects and wonderful presentations before the commission. So, this is your feel-good message for the day. Thank you all. I, and I'll be here watching you and participating. I would be there in person, but I was gardening until the last minute, so I'm here in my dirty jeans. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Cindy. All right. Thank you. So, we will close the public appearances, move on to announcements. And Brandon, I think you have an announcement or two.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one really important one. I want to introduce everyone who hasn't met her yet to Anna Jeanette. She's our new community planning and building director, just started on Monday. Anna, welcome. We're very excited to have Anna here. She's worked at the county of Monterey for a long time. She has over 20 years of planning experience, AICP certified planner, and just a wealth of experience and a genuinely nice human being who's very solution-oriented. I think people will really enjoy working with her. I know that I'm excited selfishly to bid you all adieu after this meeting. This will be my last planning commission sitting on the dais with you. I figured I'd sit, side-saddle with Anna today, but we're very lucky to have her. Trust me when I say that I've worked with her for, for many years, and the city is, is going to enjoy getting to know her.
Thank you, Brandon. Welcome, Anna. And I've also had the pleasure of working with her in the past, so I'm looking forward to having you taking us in new directions here. So, and thank you, Brandon, for your service. Okay, so, any other announcements from any commissioners? No? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Consent calendar is items that are routine in nature and do not require discussion or, or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask for any items to be considered individually for purposes of commission discussion and/or public comment. I guess this time, are there any items that the commission would like to pull? And there are, I should say, there are three items on our consent agenda today. The January 15, 2025 special meeting minutes, the monthly activity report for January 2025, and a time extension for DS 23137 layman, and the associated coastal development permit to demolish 26 square feet of a 1,597 square foot single story residence, and construction of a 219 square foot single story addition, and associated site improvements located on San Carlos, five southwest of 13th, in the R1 district. So, is there anybody from the public who would like to have any of those items pulled? Okay, seeing none. Then, can I get a motion to adopt the consent calendar, please?
I can make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Consent calendar has passed. So, next item is, ah, the roofing materials discussion. And staff, do you want to just explain what?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and we could, maybe you and I could even tag-team this a little bit.
I'd be happy to do that, yeah.
So, at, at our last planning commission meeting, the commission did discuss alternate roof materials, one of those being metal roofs, but in general, alternate roof materials, with some direction to come back at this next meeting with more information, some samples, bring insurance agents, fire department. And we've been working on setting all that up. In the interim, we did have a meeting with our Design Traditions Steering Committee to try and bring their recommendation to you as well. They had a robust conversation between the last meeting and this one, and provided some feedback. They asked for some additional information as well before they could, felt like they could provide a really good recommendation to this commission. And so, coming out of that, Commissioner Locke actually sat with us and the Design Traditions Steering Committee as a liaison for the planning commission. Everyone at that table agreed that it would be wise to push this conversation one more month, so we can bring a better suite of information, including physical samples, to this commission next month. So, what did I miss, Chair Locke?
Actually, you did a very nice job. No, I, I attended the meeting, actually. Mel was there as a, as a resident, but it was a good meeting. There was a lot of good discussion. We feel that what needs to come forward is a more put-together final proposal for how, how we're going to look at roofing materials in general. And I think we're at least one month, possibly two months from having that information ready to go. So, I'm supporting continuing this item until we have that opportunity. And I've also been made aware that staff has a number of samples that they've collected over time of various different materials, which we will have put together in a presentation so that people can actually touch and feel it and see what, what we're talking about. So, yeah, I think at this point, I, I would go ahead and move that we continue this item to a time uncertain right now, until you're ready to, to actually bring it back.
We'll, we'll notice it again.
Do you still need to take time for public comment, or because it was on the agenda?
Because this was on the agenda. You still have to take public comment. What we, what we try to encourage folks to do, recognizing, and I did speak with Mr. Smith, for example, today, and let him know about this. We, we're going to come back and talk about this again at a very near future meeting. So, they'll be, they'll be welcome to speak again. If people want to say their piece today, they can. We don't, we're not going to limit their comment. Ideally, save your, save your comments for next time when the planning commission's actually going to be discussing this topic. Otherwise, you might have to repeat yourself, or if you can't make the next one. Yeah, but it's certainly, we have to open it for public comment, but what we're really looking for comments on is whether or not we're going to continue this. But people can say whatever they want.
Right. And, and as you said, when we come back again, we will have a robust discussion about it.
Absolutely.
With an opportunity for more public comment.
Yep.
So, if there's anybody in the room right now that would like to come to the microphone and speak on this topic, which is the roofing materials discussion and continuation of that, you can come to the microphone at this time. Not seeing anyone here. I see two hands online. Nathan Smith, would you like to speak, please?
Yes, thank you so much. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I am stuck at the firehouse. So, if I get a call, I apologize, I will have to abruptly leave. Good afternoon, commission. My name is Nathan Smith, and I am the homeowner on the northeast corner of Taurus and First. Last month, you passed Resolution 2025-1. As a reminder, the resolution allows me to replace an existing wood shake roof with a vertical standing seam metal one, with the following conditions. One, reroute the entire structure, and two, use an alternative color other than black. To use your words, I was to work with staff to find an appropriate color other than black. To update the commission, it took a month, but I finally received a recommendation from staff yesterday on two color options that will be approved at the staff level. On a sidebar, as a fellow civil servant, I would just like to remind everyone here that we must answer the call in a timely manner, not responding to phone calls and emails as simply bad customer service. Now, I know the discussion on materials is being pushed out yet another month, or two. But I would like to add some comments for consideration today. And although my metal roof has been approved, I will continue to participate in these discussions as I feel very strongly about these issues in my community and my neighborhood. You're not getting rid of me that easy. My understanding is that one of the issues may be a misunderstanding of SRI, or solar reflective index. Planning has chosen an SRI rating of 25 or less. I want to offer further knowledge of what this means. The definition of solar reflective index is a number that measures how well a roof absorbs solar heat. Heat, not light. I believe SRI is trying to be used as a way to determine how bright or light reflective a metal roof may be. A more appropriate metric would be SR, or solar reflectance. In theory, a completely black roof, which would absorb 100% of the sun's energy, would have an SRI of zero, while a pure white roof would have a reflective, would reflect 100% of the sun's energy and would have an SRI of 100. Roof material manufacturers try to get the highest SRI rating they can in an effort to make homes energy efficient, no matter what color. Therefore, choosing to only allow an SRI of 25 or less will significantly limit the color choices you can offer to your constituents, as well as make their homes less energy efficient. There are several earth toned colors that will offer a low contrast solution, but they have an SRI higher than 25. These colors are dull and will not stand out in the light. But because of the arbitrary restriction of SRI 25 or less, staff was hardly allowed to approve my project. I would instead request that the commission decide which colors they will allow as options for roofs in the city. Or if you must impose a rating system, use SR, solar reflectance, instead. All roofing materials have an SRI rating, by the way. For example, wood shake roofs have an SRI of over 60 when first installed. Composite shake shingles have an SRI of over 30, no matter what color. Is this commission planning on requiring all new roofs in the city to have an energy inefficient SRI of 25 or less? Or is this arbitrary restriction only for metal roofing? Things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elaine White, would you like to speak?
I would. Thank you very much. Actually, I could not have asked for a better presentation than the one that Mr. Smith just made. I live, we live on Viscano, eight southeast of Mountain View, and I am also a real estate broker and am dealing on a daily basis with clients who can't get insurance and who are concerned about the risk to their homes being in a high or very high fire zone area. So, I could not support Mr. Smith's comments more heavily, and would also urge that the committee think about what it can do to not only speed up this process, but facilitate homeowners in putting metal roofs on their homes to prevent, as much as possible, the area just having the same kinds of consequences that existed in Southern California. The California Fire Service recommends metal roofs. They are recyclable, and they are not, unlike comp shingle roofs, they are not made of a petroleum product. So, I think that there has to be a, a mind shift in consideration of the materials that we use in this time when fire is such a big concern. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Bringing back, I would like to move that we continue this item to a time uncertain.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. All right. Great. Thank you. All right. So, now we're moving to our public hearings, and our first item this evening is the artificial turf policy. Staff?
One moment.
No problem.
Good afternoon. My name's Catherine, and I'll be speaking about artificial turf. A little bit different of a topic, but as a reminder, this is coming before you this evening because the commission is a recommending body to the city council. So, artificial turf, a little bit of background. In 2016, as an emergency measure in a time of drought, the state required jurisdictions to approve artificial turf. And accordingly, the city complied, and we've been approving artificial turf since. However, last year in 2024, the law was amended, restoring the power of jurisdictions to limit, further regulate, or even prohibit the installation of artificial turf. Which brings us to today. We have prepared a new artificial turf policy, simply prohibiting artificial turf citywide. And now I'll go into quite a bit more detail as to how we got here. So, to start with, what is artificial turf? It's a man-made synthetic product intended to simulate the appearance of natural turf, grass, sod, or lawn. And I kind of use the terms artificial turf and synthetic grass interchangeably. As I mentioned back in 2016, this is the, the language. A city, we, we could not prohibit the installation of drought tolerant landscaping, and that included synthetic grass and artificial turf on residential property. It went on to say, the 2016 law, that cities can't, could impose reasonable restrictions, provided that those restrictions did not, like, increase the cost of installing the turf, effectively prohibit the installation of turf, or impede the installation. Basically, we had to approve it. That's the gist of it. So, some of those reasonable restrictions that we could apply include regulating turf within the drip line of a tree. So, with that, in 2017, the city developed permitting standards for turf, which we've been using, and our records indicate that approximately 40 applications were approved since 2017. These are the application requirements that we had. There is no fee, but we did require that folks bring in, they, they needed to provide a site plan showing all the trees. They needed to bring in a sample, a physical sample, so that we could make sure there's holes in the bottom, that sort of thing. And then, as I mentioned, last year, the state changed course and amended the law to restore our ability to prohibit artificial turf. They basically changed the definition of drought tolerant landscaping to exclude turf, artificial turf. So, in response to the amended state law, we are recommending that turf be prohibited citywide because it is a plastic petroleum product that may cause adverse effects on public health, stormwater management, pollutant discharge, and neighborhood character. So, we do find that it's just inappropriate in all zoning districts. And I'll just go through those reasons one by one. To start with, public health, there are emerging studies that illuminate potential health impacts. This is a chemical product that includes carcinogens, neurotoxicants, mutagens, endocrine disruptors, PHAs, BPAs, PFAS. And that, that mixture does pose potentially some exposure risks. And then, in terms of stormwater management, like I said, we have been collecting sam, physical samples to check that the artificial turf being installed does have drainage holes. However, the absorption rates of a synthetic turf product are not comparable to any natural plant material. And we do have very small lot sizes that just amplify the importance And we do have very small lot sizes that just amplify the importance of all rainwater, um, percolating down onsite and not going into our storm drain systems or neighboring Pollutant just discharge, micro and nanoplastics, nylon and crumb rubber, that's what you see in the picture there, those little pieces of rubber, among others, um, other ingredients. All of these materials deteriorate over time and leach into the air, water, and soil. As you may know, Carmel Bay is a protected watershed and an area of special biological significance, and our storm drains go right into the ocean without any treatment. So therefore, we are very interested in controlling what goes into our, our storm water. And that also brings us to the fact that artificial turf, it doesn't last forever. Approximately 10 years on average, it needs to be removed and replaced as it weathers and wears. And because it's such a complex product, petroleum, plastic, it's typically landfilled, um, rather than recycled. Soil health. When you apply a plastic top layer, um, not just this top layer, but also the base rock layer, it really limits air, water, and organic material like leaves getting into the soil. So this impacts all of our living organisms like worms, microorganisms, et cetera, um, that we need for healthy soil. Lastly, uh, neighborhood character. In addition to all those environmental concerns, uh, there are potential negative aesthetic impacts to the city. Our municipal code and our residential design guidelines have the words unnatural and natural just kind of plastered everywhere, um, really encouraging natural settings, natural forest character, natural materials. And while there is indeed quite a range of product quality, as you can see in the image, it can either be like putt putt golf grass at the bottom, or it could more closely mimic grass, even the most naturalistic looking products still appear synthetic. So there's just the excerpt from the code about relaxed, informal, uh, consistent with the character of our forest. And then our design guidelines, again, speak to informal gardens, uh, rather than the traditional grass lawns seen in many other communities. And some of the language in the design guidelines really applies to both artificial turf or natural turf. It speaks to the inappropriates of lawns generally, but I've included them here. Certainly, we encourage native plants, um, native plants to the central coast, and again, informal arrangements and lawns especially visible from the street should be avoided. So we're not the first to consider this. It's already been, uh, banned in Milbrae and San Marino, potentially among others. And it seems like other jurisdictions are starting to consider this topic and may follow. Looks like Palo Alto and LA potentially. So that's it for my presentation. In terms of SEQA, uh, it's not applicable at this time. You are not adopting a policy. You are being asked to consider a recommendation to the council, uh, which will make a SEQA determination. And the staff recommendation is to please consider the proposed artificial turf policy, which is a prohibition, uh, because it's a plastic petroleum product that may cause adverse effects on public health, stormwater management, pollutant discharge, neighborhood character. Uh, so we do recommend prohibiting it citywide. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Um, the staff report was very thorough also, so appreciate that very much.
Any questions?
Um, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Then I will open this item up for comments from the public. Is there anyone in the room here who would like to speak to this topic? Adam?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, I'm Adam Jeselnik, architect in Carmel. Uh, I've been following this topic for a couple of months now and had previously sent in, um, some of my comments to Catherine, but I thought, um, since we have this opportunity at a public hearing tonight, I'll, I'll bring them up to you as well. I do strongly agree with the, the findings on, uh, the adverse environmental impacts of artificial turf, um, and the aesthetic component as well. I think that, um, we all, um, value the natural environment here and the natural, um, appearance of the, um, village in the forest. Um, and we can see how, uh, artificial turf is, um, stands in stark opposition to that. Uh, my concern really is bringing up this topic, um, in reference to some of the updated standards that are coming down from the state on, um, defensible space around homes more generally and how that might relate to the city's, um, enforcement and, uh, possible, um, expansion of the guidelines surrounding site coverage. Um, you know, with the elimination of this as a possible use for site coverage, um, we're becoming more and more limited in terms of our possible choices for, um, landscaping around homes. And, uh, because of the state fire guidelines that are coming in terms of defensible space, um, the use of any sort of, uh, natural bark material is going to be strongly discouraged, um, if not mandated outright. So, um, I guess what I'd like to do is just to have this be an opportunity to continue a discussion at a planning commission level and in terms of coordination with the design guideline updates that are happening, um, to take a look at what are some other materials that we might be able to consider as permeable, natural, um, and fire resistant, um, since , uh, we all agree that artificial turf and natural grass are not, uh, really suitable in the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and good comments on that one. All right, Neil?
Neil Cruz, just a quick thought. I'm, I'm for not having it, basically. I, I don't know if the commission wouldn't on occasion, some unusual project or, or some different kind of soil or some, you know, really not common thing where they might say, just in this case, it really makes sense to use it. That's the only way I would like to see it available, but you, you would know better than I if there, there would be such a thing.
Okay. Thank you for your comments on that one. Um, I know Stevenson, uh, the lower school here in town has synthetic turf.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there, there may be.
And I just thought that I should have mentioned, while some other jurisdictions in, in their process of prohibiting turf say, anyone who has it needs to phase it out within a certain timeframe, we are not recommending that. So we're saying, if someone has turf, they can just keep it. We're not going to make them take it out. Uh, and then the other thing I thought I'd mention was that I did take this topic to the Forest and Beach Commission last month, and they also made a recommendation to the, to the city council to, to prohibit turf.
Great. Thank you. Um, do we have anybody online?
You.
Okay. I can't see, so.
Cindy Lloyd, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you. My name is Cindy Lloyd. Um, thank you Catherine for your in-depth, um, presentation and thank you Adam for your comments. I hardly agree with both of them and I don't need to say anything else. Thanks very much.
Come on up, Carol.
Yeah. I also am, uh, for the prohibition. I'm thinking for the people who already have the synthetic turf, uh, one question I have is, uh, if it becomes old after 10 years, I guess on average, would we then require that they not replace it?
That's the way the policy would read, I think.
Can you come up to the microphone, Catherine, please? Thanks.
So the policy, which is one of your attachments, would read prohibits any future installations? So I.
Replacement would be considered.
A new installation, yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for your comments. Um, I'll close the public hearing at this time, come back to our commission and Erin, would you like to?
Sure. I'm in full support of this. Uh, I did some research over the weekend and synthetic turf breaks into smaller pieces that create the microplastics that pollute our, um, rivers and, and oceans. And these microplastics can actually be carried for long distances by wind, leaching into our water systems, through storm drains and contaminated soil. And so I, uh, I agree with some of the other towns that are prohibiting and banning turf. I believe that this is, uh, the right step. This is a completely unnecessary plastic product. And then in looking at some of the things that have been presented to the state assembly around microplastics and, um, the water and the environment, um, it contains numerous, synthetic turf contains numerous carcinogenic and toxic chemicals, and these chemicals leach into our soils and waterways and oceans. And so that can impact, um, various things, um, especially humans, aquatic, uh, life and environmental health, um, all is impacted negatively. In, uh, between 2014 and 2021, there was a study done in Spain and they looked at, um, how the, how synthetic turf specifically contributes to the microplastic, um, issue within our oceans, and it is a major source of contaminating, um, through runoff. And so, um, for that reason, I'm in full support and hope that our city council will proceed.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerbikoff, would you like to comment?
Um, yes, I, I don't think that the issue is controversial in any way. I mean, this is, uh, I'm actually surprised that in 2016, uh, Sacramento decided to actually require that. Uh, people knew a lot about microplastics in 2016. Um, so I, and, and the trade off between saving a couple of drips of water or a couple of gallons of water and getting microplastic all around you is kind of, kind of a weird trade off. I don't, I, I don't know who's gonna make that. On the bright side, I think we don't have that many artificial turfs in Carmel. I'm not sure if that is because we managed to somehow tell people not to do it, even though it was legal to request it, or was it just people were smart on Sacramento and decided that it's not a good idea? So, may, maybe both. In terms of, um, requests, the only request I remember for artificial turf was the dollhouse last year, and they had, uh, I can't remember exactly the details, but they had some specific need for that, and it wasn't visible from the street. You remember in front of the dollhouse? Yeah, they, they had some, some reason for that, and I think we allowed them to do it, but with some limitations to stay away from trees and things like that. One element that is not discussed in the staff report is actually how bad it is for pets. Because we, we human, we're sick, what, five, some, some of us are six feet from the ground. Uh, some of us are five, but, uh, we're fairly far away from the artificial turf, but for pets, especially for dogs who go around and sniff everything, this is poison. This is absolutely a disaster and it goes into their lungs and you cannot take it out. There's no way to get it out. So for pets, and we have a lot of pets in Carmel, that is the, the worst thing you can do is basically to install artificial turf in your, in your property. So I'm all in support for, um, a, a stronger policy that says no artificial turfs. If somebody has a special case, I cannot think of one, but if somebody has a special case and needs an approval, we can always discuss that, but as a, as a rule, we should, we should say no, no artificial turf.
Thank you. Commissioner Alborn?
I agree with all the comments that have been made and I support the excellent staff report, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments and I, I would just echo the same, um, uh, yeah, I, I think the staff report said everything that needs to be said about all the bad parts of artificial turf. And, um, so yeah, I think, uh, we would all be supportive of that. Would somebody like to make a motion?
And more, more motion to vote on this?
Yeah, the motion we're looking for, the, the action we need you to vote on is to make a recommendation to the city council to adopt this policy.
Yeah, supporting the policy.
Okay, so I can make a motion, supporting the policy to make a recommendation to the city council to prohibit synthetic turf.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerbikoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. All right, thank you.
And, and we will discuss the site coverage issue separately with staff or how we're gonna do that?
Yeah, that would be eventually.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so moving on here, we are now going to item number six, which is DS 24014 and variance 24364 Lewis and McClellan Trust. Uh, this is consideration of a trap one design study, um, referral and associated variants, uh, for the construction of a 39 square foot addition to an existing residence and a 200 square foot parking pad in the front setback located on San Carlos, three southwest of Vista. And we have Jacob.
Hello. I'm not used to speaking at this podium. There we go.
Just have to bend down and.
Yeah, just. So as you described, it's the, um, McClellan and Lewis and McClellan Trust. Um, here's, is the existing site plan. As you can see, the driveway, you saw on our tour today, there's the garage there. It is being proposed to be converted into a primary bedroom with a walk-in closet and a bathroom. Um, they are going to be reducing the total site coverage onsite, uh, based off the addition of the S, uh, FAR, per our code, which is a two to one ratio. Um, and there's no additional site coverage is being added. Here is the proposed site plan. You can see the parking pad and the front setback, which is, uh, what they're requesting the variance for, um, and the small addition to what was formerly the garage. There is some issues with this, but we'll get into that. Uh, first for part of the zoning code, uh, 1710030F is, parking must have practical ingress and egress. Uh, I actually talked to the architect when we were on the site tour. It was informed that as part of this project, the homeowners would want to remove the driveway gate, cause as currently constructed, as you can see from the highlighted photo, it is, uh, blocking the path into the parking pad. So, um, if it was removed, that would help with practical ingress and egress. I still believe that because of the sharp angle that it had to turn, it'd be tricky to do, so. It's a, yeah. Variances. For, uh, parking pads, uh, in our code, we have a specific, uh, language that says that garages and carports are allowed in the front setback with approval by the planning commission. Uh, parking pads are not included in that and, and therefore a setback, um, variance is required in order to approve one. For variances, there are required findings that need to be met, um, and all the findings must be met in order to approve a variance. Uh, I've highlighted two that I believe, um, are just not, uh, able to be found. There are other ones, there's a little bit of back and forth and I could see how they could be found, but these two seem just undoable. Uh, A is that there aren't any special circumstances to the property, that the strict application of the code would prohibit them from enjoying privileges of surrounding properties. It's a big block of text there, but right now they have a garage in the front. It's a little shorter than our standard spots of 20 by 10. But this, the whole neighborhood has, you know, all of Carmel really, has slopes, trees, power lines. There's ways to accommodate that. The addition could go on a different part of the property. You could keep the garage, they could come to you and extend the garage slightly into the front setback, cause that is approvable without a variance. Um, so that's finding A. Uh, finding E was the other one that was, uh, a big sticking point for this, and that's that the condition or situation for which the variance is sought is not the direct actions of the existing or prior owner. Um, and this variance is being sought because the applicant is proposing to convert their existing garage into a primary bedroom. So, they already have parking onsite, they're requesting the carport, or the parking pad in the front setback because they're losing parking for the conversion. So, it seems that the request for the variance is a direct result of the proposed work by the owner and the applicant. Uh, with that, staff is recommending the, uh, commission adopt resolution denying the application. Uh, I have the rest of the findings as kind of backend slides. If you are curious, I can show you what staff response was, but I figured because all required, findings were required, that, uh, they're optional. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do, does anyone have questions for staff on this item?
So, this pertains to, this variance would be going against zoning codes, right? I mean, um, the, the laws that are put in place, so, okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
I have a question. So, um, in my mind, a, a parking pad is less intrusive than a garage, so do you know why we don't have parking pads included in this zoning description? Where we allow garages, like a single car, garages in the, in the front setback?
I could speculate, but I don't have a exact reason. It might be because the carport or the garage would be a little structure, we don't want just bare cars in the front setback, but that's pure speculation. Uh, Brandon, do you?
Yeah, no, I think, I think Jake really nailed that.
Yeah, no, I think, I think Jake really nailed that. The notion of these detached garages in the front is, you know, back, back in the old days, garages were always detached because cars caught on fire a lot more often, to be frank. Like, they were these old rickety vehicles. And they were set away from the house. And if you look at the older sort of development style here in the village, you would see these small detached, and that's why we have historically small garages too, 10 by 20 garages, pretty small garage nowadays standards. So the notion of the detached garage in the front is that it is, as Jake said, a structure. It's meant to add, when you look at the findings for a detached garage in the front setback, it gives you some of that history even. It says, you know, to create diversity among a streetscape. So you have to look to the left and the right and see if you've granted this before. So that's part of it. And the other part, if what Jake said is correct also, is that we don't really want to see cars just hanging out there. So a carport or parking pad is not really encouraged in the front setback, because then you end up with just a car sitting in the front setback. And that, that's not part of the sort of design aesthetic ethos of the village.
But the house we saw today had this big fence with, with ivy on it. So would it stay? Would the fence stay the way it is? Because it protects the car. You're not going to see the car behind it.
As currently proposed, the project didn't involve removing the fence or the gate. The architect informed me that they would be removing the gate. So based off the location of the parking pad, you'd see about the back half of the car.
A little bit.
If the gate was, yeah, I mean, not, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things for the commission to consider is, you know, there's, there's sort of like a spectrum of how permanent visual barriers are. Topography is one of the most permanent visual barriers, like a hill or something like that. Landscaping and manmade structures are towards the lower end of the spectrum of permanent visual barriers. That's something for you to consider as well.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead. Go ahead. Jake, the, part of the, the preparation for this design study included some variance examples. Could you speak to those?
There was some examples that were provided by the architect that I believe he's going to go into more detail in his presentation, but.
Okay, I can wait.
I, I looked through them, and from what I could tell, there was one for a variance for a parking pad, an existing parking pad in a side setback that wanted to be retained when there was some work done on the house. Or an existing parking location. They seemed to be different situations, in my opinion.
Okay.
But the architect will go into more of the details on that in his presentation.
Thank you.
I know this is getting really like in the weeds, but when I was looking at it today, even if you took the gate down, it still seems like there's not even enough room for the car to actually turn around and come back out. So I didn't understand the logistics of that. Like, how do, how, do they have to back all the way back out, like the way that came in? Or is there actual space to like back up by the proposed garage conversion and then come out the, from, like, I didn't understand how that was going to work.
That was a part of my concerns. The, the gate being in the way for the practical ingress and egress was a concern, but the, having it parallel to the street and then at basically a right angle to the driveway, it did seem impractical to get in, which is the specific language I mentioned from the code. Let's see. That was 17.10.030F regarding parking and access. Any other questions?
All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation. Would the architect like to come up and give us a presentation, please? And try to keep it maybe to five minutes or so? And you can? I can do that. Okay.
Presentation. Just maximize it. It will? Yes. Perfect. All right. Hi again, Adam Jesselnick, architect in Carmel, here to represent the owners of the Lewis McClellan Trust for their property on San Carlos that we visited earlier. Thank you, staff, for working with us to bring this project forward. I'll work through this relatively quickly, but definitely be able to answer any questions you might have after my presentation as well. So a quick backstory on this project. I was hired by the owners in late 2023. Their primary objectives for this project were to maintain as much of the existing home as was possible, but to add a bedroom. So essentially, convert the existing garage into livable house area to modify the existing bathroom and relocate a laundry closet. And then to, as much as possible, unify some existing finishes, like the flooring, and keep the exterior character of the home as is, so match all existing exterior materials. The primary site constraints, as you were able to see earlier today, included the two large redwood trees that were in the front yard to the southeast of the home. And the fact that the existing parking is nonconforming, based on the city's own guidelines. So there was no preliminary site assessment for this project as a, as a track one project. It was historically ineligible. That was reconfirmed last year. We had a first city review that was completed in February, and then a subsequent review by Jake, which was completed in June. And at that point, the path to a variance was outlined, and we responded accordingly. So this is just the site diagram. Essentially, you can see the two redwood trees there in the front yard, the property setbacks, the current setback to the existing garage, which is just a little over 15 feet, and the site coverage that exists, which is nonconforming. I'll speak to that a little bit later. But this house was built over time. There was at least three separate projects that I could determine. I have a diagram later for that. But, you know, there was an original cottage built 100 years ago. There was an addition, the work on the deck, the garage, which at one point was, was detached, and then the garage was connected to the house. So a lot of work has been done to this property. This slide just meant to show the, the nonconformity of the existing garage. So that orange dashed line would be a 10 by 20 parking space. I think Jake mentioned that we might consider extending the garage into the setback, but unfortunately, because it's attached to the house, that would also be noncompliant. So only a detached garage can be in the front yard setback. And we'd be sort of faced with the same question of whether or not to allow variance in this This is the property, as you saw today. Again, just noting that the scope of the project, which is including that small floor addition, would require correcting the nonconformity of the garage, regardless of whether or not we were using the garage as living space. So essentially, any addition to the house, in my past experience, then has, has triggered correcting the nonconforming parking. And in this case, we're really, as you saw, we have all the constraints of the existing trees, the setbacks, and the existing house that we hope to maintain. So this is the proposed site plan. Just a couple of things to point out here. We, we did remove site coverage in amount, you know, as required by the code. So we're taking away a significant amount of nonconforming site coverage, almost 500 square feet. We're essentially utilizing the existing driveway. We did consider another path, which was basically to create a new driveway on the south side of the property. But because that was getting closer to the redwood trees, we, we decided to revert back to this plan. And then, as Jake mentioned, the proposal would include eliminating the gate, the driveway gate, but we would like to retain the front yard fence. So there would be that screening in addition to the trees that exist to screen the parking This slide just basically, you know, a couple of notes on the design guidelines. I do believe the project is fully compliant with all of their aspects of the city's code. We're preserving and not impacting any of the significant trees that exist, seven large trees. And just, it didn't really come out in the staff report, but, you know, there was in the course of working through the review process, quite a bit of back and forth with staff to ensure that all the design guidelines and zoning requirements for this project were met. So in terms of the findings, you know, basically, I did look at two previous variances that have been approved for this not exact condition, but a very similar condition of a parking pad in either the front or the side yard setback. One of them was a project that I worked on, and another project was a year before that by another architect. And so I studied those findings pretty carefully in providing my letter to staff. And I do believe that many of those things overlap here. Specific to finding A, which Jake talked to, there are special physical circumstances, special physical circumstances that exist at this project. We have an existing house that extends over a significant portion of the, of the lot on one story. We have the two significant trees, which of course, we're not moving or modifying. And really important to this project is, is to keep the house on one level. So we really didn't look at plans to, to build a second story or a basement. I think both of those would be problematic in other ways, and just not functional for my clients. So, you know, I just wanted to show here, again, the site plan, just for reference. And then, these are the two other projects. So the Toro residence, you can see the, the parking strips on the side there. That was essentially always where a car was parked, but we did an addition to the back of the house, and so we were required to bring the parking into compliance. There may at one time have been a garage in the back, I'm not really sure, but we were granted approval in that case for noncompliant parking pad in the front and side yard setback. And then the Dalbello project on the right there, again, you had an old, you know, cottage that the owners wished to maintain. It was a large addition on the back of the project. But because of the 44 lot width, there really is no way to build a, a legal parking space there without tearing into the existing house. And so the commission did grant that front yard exception in that case. And then I just would like to speak to, this graphic here does show that example of how the garage was detached before it was connected to the house. And then in terms of access to the parking space, so I actually did study this. This shows a parking radius of a, a standard SUV, how that would be able to pull in on the, on the existing driveway and turn into this parking space. It does work. Tricky is not a bad word, but it does, it does actually work. So you would be able to pull into this space and then back out of it in the same way you, you pulled into it, which is really no different than anybody's garage that exists in town. So with that, that basically concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have questions for the applicant?
Yeah. You, you mentioned that the garage will be converted into a bedroom with a bathroom, right? Do you have the water credits? Does the property have enough water credits for an extra bathroom?
The bathroom exists already. It's just being remodeled.
Oh, that's the, the bathroom that is behind the garage? That's the one?
Right.
So there will be no addition to it? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Adam. So do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? I'm not seeing anyone here. Is there anyone online?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cheryl Eklar, if you'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name's Cheryl Engler. I am the neighbor heading towards first. And I really just had a question for the architect. I don't read plans fairly well, or particularly well. But the parking pad, are you anticipating it being behind the fence line?
He's nodding his head yes.
And then, as part of the proposal, again, I'm not super familiar with what goes into a proposal. Is the ground cover and that kind of thing in there as well?
Jake, can you? It's diggy, right?
It's pavers, I think, for the, for the pad itself?
Yeah.
It's pavers, yeah.
So permeable pavers?
Okay.
It would be.
All right, that's all I have. As long as the pad is, is sitting in the back end, we maintain sort of the natural beauty of what's in front and, you know, behind the road, I think it's fine.
Yeah, this, this would not, it would not be in the right of way.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any other comments. So let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Keripikoff, would you like to start?
Yeah, I would. I, I understand the issue with variances, we do not want to have them. And I understand the whole discussion about the pad versus the garage in the front. But there is a logic in that project, right? So you see that the house is on a single level, it's expanded over time. You can see the different foundations. So you basically see the history of the house when you look at the foundation. Some of that is crawling space, some of that is slab. So it does, it does make sense that they, they want to move from a two-bedroom house to a three-bedroom house without increasing the number of bathrooms. I like that the project does not require going second floor. That, that solves a lot of problems, or avoids a lot of problems. And we also have the, kind of the incentive to approve ADUs for additional.
Yeah, this is not an ADU, though.
Yeah. This is not going to be converted to an ADU?
No, it's, no, it's just a bedroom. Bedroom and bathroom.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I get it. So it's basically moving from two to, that's a different project with ADU. Sorry, I got confused with the other one. Okay, so basically moving from two to three bedroom. So what, I would, I would like, I liked the, the project. I liked the way they're approaching that, and basically adding space without going up. In terms of variances, I'm just a little bit confused why we need a variance for pad, especially one that is partially hidden from the street. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, it, it's a good solution for that particular lot. So I would actually support this project, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Alborn?
Thank you, Chair. I spent a lot of time reading the municipal code on this. And 1710030, especially F, right? Talking about practical ingress and egress. And the picture that we had in our packet had that gate there. But you answered that question very, very neatly. It's a diminutive space on this particular lot. And we're Carmel. I mean, we are diminutive. And seeing the diagram, sir, with the SUV being able to actually access that and pull in reasonably far and be outside of the, the vision of the right of way, that satisfies me very much. So that's the end of my comment.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
So I guess I'm the controversial one. So I actually support staff's recommendation to deny this. And I think that there are other solutions that can be proposed that wouldn't require this variance.
Okay. To me. Thank you. Yeah, I, I actually am more supportive of the staff recommendation on this. I don't, I guess, I don't see that there really is an easy ingress egress on this, even with the gate removed. I think it's super tight. I have been an SUV driver, I know what they could do. But anyway, I have a concern about that. I think there are other options on this, and I can understand not wanting to go to a second story. And I guess the other option would be, and I'm not sure if this is, so you've got a total of about 15 feet between the property line and the front of the garage. Is that right? In the staff report, it talks about being able to stack up two cars in front of the garage. So is there any possibility of doing some kind of a carport, or is that, would not, would that not work in that space?
I think the front of the garage is, yeah, just over 15 feet. We want our spaces to be standard 20 by 10, so I think that would be tricky.
That, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there was a previous proposal, as Adam talked about, that instead of having the carport parallel to the street there, it kind of.
would that not work in that space?
I think the front of the garage is, yeah, just over 15 feet, and we want our spaces to be standard, 20 by 10, so I think that would be tricky.
That, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there was a previous proposal, as Adam talked about, that instead of having the carport parallel to the street there, it'd kind of come in at an angle on the opposite side of the trees. So like, here's the driveway gate here, it'd be on this side, take out the fence there. That, a problem with that is it's too close to the redwood trees, so I don't think there's a practical way to fit in a carport.
Hmm. Well, I guess, really, those are my comments. To me, this just seems like it's really super tight, and that it does not appear to fit within what we've got in our guidelines. So I would support staff's position on this, but somebody want to make a motion and see where we...
I motion that we support staff's decision to deny the variance.
Okay, do we have a second? Well, I'll second that. So, further discussion on this item?
Roll call?
Let's go for roll call.
Commissioner Alborn?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerri Pickoff?
No, no to that one, yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Motion doesn't pass?
Yeah. So do we have...
So, in this case, when you have a tie vote, the motion fails. Another commissioner can make a different motion. You can deliberate more, try to effectively convince one another why a variance is or isn't required. You also have the option of continuing the item until you have your fifth member back, who could help break the tie next month. You have a host of options.
All right. Well, I would entertain a motion to continue the item for consideration at the fifth, yeah, with the fifth commissioner here.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion second? Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerri Pickoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. All right. Moving on. So we've continued that item for another month.
Madam Chair, just to confirm, you continue that to a date certain next month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven is DS 24346. This is PNT 2024 LLC. And rather than my stating all of these things, I'll let you explain what we're getting with.
Yes, thank you. PNT 2024 LLC, located on Santa Rita Street 5, southwest of Third. This is a concept design study.
You are recused.
And, yes. Commissioner Allen is recused.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, that would be me.
To start with a background, this is a 4,000 square foot lot. There's an existing, single-story home, 946 square feet, and an existing 200 square foot attached carport. The project proposes to demo what's there and construct, you know, that the 1788 figure actually should include the 200 square foot garage, so they're, they're well within their 1,800 square foot floor area limit. It's going to be a new two-story house with a 200 square foot detached garage. Here you can see the existing residence with the story poles up, as viewed from Santa Rita Street. This picture also shows tree number three, you can see there in the front yard. The forester did evaluate all the trees, eight trees either on the property or in the immediate vicinity. Six were found to be significant. We have a redwood, and then we have several coast alive oaks. No trees are proposed to be removed as part of this project, and there are no additional tree plantings required per the forester. The forester did look at tree number three specifically, and, you know, when you consider your final details approval, there will be a condition to hand dig a trench to identify the relocations on that tree prior to construction of the detached garage, which you can see here does encroach into that 10-foot root protection zone for tree three. But because there's an existing concrete driveway and existing carport, the forester determined that this tree was not at risk. I'll just show the floor plans quickly. The home has an existing basement. They're actually proposing a new basement west of the existing basement, just 100 square feet, and actually, the code kind of gives them 100 square feet as bonus. This is not included in their floor area total. And then the other areas you see there do not count as floor area because they're less than five feet, they're crawl spaces. Here's our first-story plan, and the second-story plan. You'll notice a second-story deck at the southwest corner of the home. And here is our roof plan with several cross gables and a couple of shed roof forms. The project complies with the plate height and the ridge height requirements, 5 and 12 pitch for both the house and the garage, and they are proposing composition shingle, three skylights there, which should not be visible from the street, and as I mentioned, a second-story deck with a solid wood rail, that's 125 square feet. So the deck doesn't count as site coverage or floor area. Here's our existing and proposed street scape view. You can see the topography sloping down to the south and to the west. Here is the elevation of the proposed east facade, well set back from the front property line, and as I mentioned, the garage is also set, it's detached, but it's not in the front setback. Our proposed south elevation, the photo on the bottom right is kind of viewed from down the street to the south on Santa Rita. You can see, again, it's kind of, it's kind of in a gully a bit, so it doesn't create a massive or looming appearance from the street. Our proposed north-side elevation, this elevation is the north side, but it contains the front door entry there, and our rear elevation. The home is proposed to be finished with kind of a natural cedar and a stone veneer. We'll come back, obviously, at final details, but here is just a look at their proposed finishes, aluminum-clad wood windows and wood doors, wood carriage doors for the garage, as I said, the natural cedar and stone veneer. One thing I did want to bring to your attention is the window schedule. We do have a design guideline that says window styles should be uniform throughout a building, and they are proposing a mix of window configurations. We've got 14 double-hung, nine fixed windows, three awning, and four casement. So there is a reason why they've selected these configurations for the various window placements, and we have the architect here. I do find that the reason for the different windows makes sense, you know, the fixed windows need to be fixed. The double-hung windows are larger than, say, the casement windows, but that's something I'm seeking feedback on, and you could, there's a draft condition of approval for your consideration if you have any feedback. In terms of site coverage, their proposed site coverage will be under their 556 maximum square foot, so it'll just be a walkway to the front entry, kind of a front entry landing deck area, and then a north-side landing, sandset pavers, as well as rain barrels also will be counted as site coverage. They're proposing, I believe, six rain barrels, and that is something that our code recommends for drainage. Here you can see those rain barrels, as well as a couple of proposed rain gardens, and then there's an area drain and like a linear drain as well. The environmental compliance department has okayed their drainage plan, and with that, the staff recommendation is to accept the concept design study, and that's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. Do we have any questions for staff? Thank you. Would the architect or applicant like to come speak to us, please? Hi.
Casey Cullen, I'm the architect. I think Catherine did a wonderful job of explaining. I don't really have a presentation to give you, but I'm here to answer questions.
Could you respond to the statement about the windows and what your...
Yes. These windows, well, I misunderstood, I suppose. I mean, to me, consistency of style means that they're the same manufacturer, or they have the same Mullions. The operation maybe could be different depending on the function. But we're open to making them more consistent. I can certainly see eliminating the awning windows that were on the stair. They were on the stair mostly because I thought the height would make any other type of operation too hard to use, because you're too low, you know, the windows are high. There are a couple places where we're required to have fixed windows on the south side because we're either close to the gas meter or we're too close to the property line. So those will have to be fixed. But we can certainly go to all casement windows, or, you know, I've talked with the owner about it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
And now we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. I don't see anybody online with their hands up. So we'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the commission, and Commissioner Alborn, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I found that this, this project was noteworthy for its water conservation plan, and I learned a great deal, actually, as I looked through the plans and saw how this was being proposed. That's my only comment, and I agree with staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerri Pickoff?
Kerri Pickoff, sorry.
Yeah, I think the project is, the proposal is very well designed. We have the bulk and mouskies away from the street in the back, that helps, you know, the impact from the street is not big. I was trying to figure out if there's any basement here. I think there's an existing basement that will stay according to the plans, but there will be no additional excavation, right? There will be no excavation?
There is an existing basement, and I can go back to that plan. They're just moving the location of the basement.
Okay.
So, kind of the darker hatch shows the existing basement, and then within that red line area, the diagonal lines shows the new basement, and then kind of everything outside of the red line shows new crawl space.
Yeah. And so we figured out the windows, they seem to be wood with aluminum clot, that makes The siding, the roofing material, I have no problems with that. The site coverage, do they comply with the site coverage requirements? Sorry?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's good.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I thought this was a really nice project, and appreciate the water efficiency of the landscaping as well. It's kind of nice to see a rain garden. We don't see a lot of rain gardens being installed, so I think that's, that's really neat. Keep it on site. What I heard as far as our looking at the resolution, this is a concept design study, and there is a proposed condition in here that uniformity of window styles, prior to scheduling the final detail hearing, the applicant shall revise the proposed project if needed to respond to the plan and commission direction regarding uniformity of window styles. And I think, I think that, I heard the applicant say that they were willing to perhaps come into more conformity with what the design standards are, so I think we will go forward, at least, I will propose we go forward with that extra condition in there, and we'll look forward to seeing this as it comes forward for final. So, do we have a motion for this?
Yeah, I guess I can make the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerri Pickoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. Thank you. And Commissioner Allen can return to the room. All right. The next item is DS 22-331 Collins Project. Thank you. So the subject site is a 4,000 square foot lot. It's currently developed with a 1,079 square foot, square feet of improvements with a 866 square foot residence and a 213 square foot accessory structure. The applicant's proposing to demolish all of the improvements on the site and develop a 1,600 square foot residence with a 200 square foot attached garage. The applicant is also proposing grading improvements throughout, site coverage improvements throughout, as well as landscape improvements throughout. Just before I move on, the project was previously considered in December of last year in the form of a preliminary review. The commission considered the application to assess the building form, citing general design primarily to address view impacts to the surrounding neighbors and provide the applicant with feedback regarding their design approach. So the preliminary site assessment for the project was completed in 2022. At the time of that site assessment, there were three rated trees on site, as well as three in the right of way. The three trees in the right of way were significant. Two of the trees on the project site were significant as well, with one being moderately significant. The moderately significant tree is the one that's highlighted in the yellow ring. The current site condition is one significant oak tree remains, and then one tree in the right of way is proposed to be removed. That's either due to danger or disease. All the trees that have been removed or plans to be removed have been done under permit or the authority of the Public Works Department. So we do have a condition of approval that as part of the project, the applicant does meet the recommended tree density for the site, which is three upper canopy trees and one lower canopy tree. Along the same lines of the forest character, there is substantial grading proposed on the project site. And that figure in the top right, the area that's shaded in red is the area that's proposed to be graded on site, and then the area just to the left in blue, that's the grading proposed for the right of way. The figure just below in the bottom right, that shows the area of the proposed retaining walls on site. When we were out on the site today, I pointed out where the new grade is proposed to be relative to the street, so basically, the project site level will be graded down to street level, which is about five feet at the property line. So with the property, excuse me, the location of the property line will come down five feet, and then towards the rear of the lot, it will come down about an additional eight feet. So it kind of varies depending on where you are on the project site. We do have a number of design guidelines that address grading and excavation. The design guidelines do encourage minimizing the extent of excavation and fill on a site, minimizing the visual impacts of retaining walls on the site as seen from the public way or neighboring sites, and to avoid abrupt changes in grade on the site in between adjoining And then we also have concept finding number two, which pertains to forest character. And then we also have concept finding number two, which pertains to forest character. The applicant did provide a preliminary landscape plan. Concept finding number two in part says that trees vegetation will maintain or establish a continuity of design both on site and in the public right of way. So as I just mentioned, there is a landscape plan for the site, however, there's no landscape improvements proposed for the right of way. So we do have a condition of approval for concept acceptance that says prior to scheduling for final details review, plans shall be revised to include landscape enhancement plan for the public right of way. So that will really tie in those grading improvements within the right of way, as well as those improvements on the project site. So as I mentioned, we had the preliminary review to address the privacy impacts to the neighbors' building, or, excuse me, the neighbors' properties back in December. The commission was generally supportive of the project, and the project has remained substantially similar. We do, again, as discussed at that last hearing, have a number of design guidelines that address building form, privacy and views. Those being that a building form should appear similar to those seen traditionally. Use restraint when introducing variations in building planes. Use simple roof forms. Limit the number of supporting attachments. So between hearings, really the only minor modifications that were made is the applicant did lower the building an additional six inches. Slide over here so I can use the pointer. So the top image is the south elevation from that December hearing. So we had an elevation point of 70.4. The building has been dropped to an elevation point of 69.9, so a reduction of six inches. And this was accomplished by lowering the building grade an additional six inches. So it went from 51.3 down to an elevation point of 50.8. So the applicant has sunk the building an additional six inches between hearings. You also notice, to address some concerns of the southern neighbor between hearings, you'll notice some shading in these windows, as well as this window here. These windows are proposed to be opaque to address privacy concerns of the southern neighbor. And then there have been some fenestration changes in the window patterns as well. There's also proposed to be a little window screen that will sit up here to avoid a direct line of sight to the southern neighbor's house as well. The window pattern motif is also carried over to the north side, but generally it's the same style of window patterns on the north and the south side. So as I just went through that list, I did call out a number of deviations from the design guidelines. Then a municipal code does allow for deviations when specific findings are made. So as, again, going through that list, there's excavation and grading and retaining walls, the use of non-traditional or irregular building forms, and then, I think I might have missed it, but the use of a flat roof on a two-story element. These are allowed when deviations achieve all of the applicable design objectives, as well as or better than would be achieved by adherence to the adopted design guidelines. So these findings were made in the staff report, and the specific purpose of these deviations were to promote residential design that respects the privacy, solar access, and private views of neighboring properties. And if you'd like, I can go through this in detail. However, with that, staff's recommending that the planning commission adopt a concept design study as described on the screen, and that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff?
So Evan, in, I thought as I was reading through your staff report, there was something that talked about grading inconsistencies.
Yeah.
Did you?
So I didn't touch on that in the presentation. However, there's an inconsistency between the grading plan, which are the civil plans as well, and then the site plan. So what I'm looking for is basically that the plan sheets to be consistent throughout. So there was a plan prepared by the architect, and then a plan prepared by the engineer, and those just aren't lining up.
And you have a proposed condition in here, right?
I'm sorry?
What, there was a condition that you added-
Yes.
To bring that in-
For basically every, all the plans throughout to be consistent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, one more question, go ahead.
Evan, on slide 10. Actually, almost all of the concept slides. Is that artificial grass?
No. It's not.
All right. Thank you.
Exactly. Good call. All right, would the applicant like to come up and give us a presentation, please? No artificial grass.
No, that's gonna be my first comment, for sure. Thank you. Is this better? Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to go over the project again. As you can see, we pretty much kept the project exactly as we submitted it on the original concept with very minor modifications during that period. I had a few meetings with the neighbors, and we went back and forth on the, you know, the views and tried to appease them on that scenario, and we did come to an agreement by lowering the building six inches, which accommodates and maintains their views as they want it. So I'm pleased to say that the neighbors are on board with the design and pleased with the overall concept that maintains their views. I don't know if you want me to go over in detail again over the project and the purpose and how we came about the design, but primarily, the overall driven factor on this project was views. You know, as you can see, we, and I actually brought some photos, I wouldn't mind bringing up or putting up on the projector if possible, so you understand, yeah, a little bit of what occurred in the process. Not that this makes any difference, but just to understand the overall concept, because I know grading is an issue, the retaining walls are an issue, it's been brought up. But I do want to say that, given the circumstances that we have, given the fact that we have some view issues, like I said before, a modern style of architecture, I believe, is the best form that will fit within this property to maintain the views. And as I demonstrated before, in a traditional pitch roof will impact significantly the views to the neighboring properties. And by maintaining, by having a flat roof, you know, it opens up those views, and by articulating the building with movement and creating a radial movement in the living room, and creating all those modifications and articulations to the elevations, then it opens up the view. So there's all that thought that went behind it to come up with this concept. So just briefly, just wanted to show you, you know, originally, the building was designed 18 inches higher than what it is today. But because of the issues with the neighbors, I dropped it 12 inches and an additional six inches again. So that unfortunately was a direction that was driven by the views and the neighbors on this property, which would have happened with any design on that particular lot. So here's a quick photo of the view, standing on the roof, looking at the properties behind me, and just to show you what I saw at the time, did not have, I wasn't, I was not able to see the neighboring properties. So the shrubs, the trees, pretty much blocked a lot of the properties. The Martin residence and, I forget the other, the neighbor to the east, right behind me, it blocked the views. So here. Thank you. So here's, here's a view from the roof. And as you can see, the property to the north, at the time, it was very difficult to see that they had a view over that bedroom window and living room window, because I was standing up high, so I assumed that my roofline would not impact their views, but I was incorrect about that. But more importantly, to the rear in the corner, that would be the Martins residence, and it was completely blocked by those trees and the shrub. Here's another perspective that shows the property right behind me. So at the time, again, I was not able to see any neighboring properties. And that's why I came up with the original design, to, you know, to put a traditional building. But when that tree in the back was removed, and the shrubs removed, then it opened up significant views to the neighbors, which impacted my design, and that's what drove it to what it is today. Here's another perspective of what I saw on the other properties. So as you can see, my original perspective was, was much different than what it is today. Lastly, just to support the overall design, here's a project that I have, it's under construction now, it's practically completed, but I wanted to just show this picture of a typical, you know, even though we're going a little bit deeper than what you see here, the cuts that we're proposing, the retaining walls that we're proposing have been approved before. This is a project that I have under construction on Mission Street, Mission and San Luis Yaya, and it's a brand-new building, and has five-foot, six-foot retaining walls, five-foot retaining walls in the back. So it's very similar to what I'm proposing today. So what I want to say with this is, you know, and I hope you support me on this project, is that what we're proposing, it's something that has been done before carefully, you know, with the civil engineer's direction. We're very careful of the neighboring properties and protecting the surrounding properties and so forth. But given the circumstances that we're in, I hope I can obtain your approval to continue moving this project forward as designed.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at this point? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your presentation, and-
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience today that would like to speak to this project?
Oh, the photos, oh yeah.
Carol Hall. I'm a neighbor, and I was distressed to see this design that we will have to look at for the next 100 years or so. I believe that if we looked at a one-story with peak roof, I'm sure the neighbors could be assuaged. And I just, I feel like it is not within Carmel character. It pains me to see it, and I don't know what else to say about it, except that I know that if I garnered the neighbors around me, they would not be happy with it either. But I didn't. So I hope, I hope this project can be brought back in a whole different style with maintaining the character of Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to, please come up to the microphone? Sorry. We have two people who have comments.
Neil Cruz. I, I like Claudio. I think he's a good designer. I heard what he went through to get here, and I respect that process. That's good architecture, what he has done. But, you know, Carol and I, maybe we must have lived in a different world. We sit out there at the farmer's market every month and have visitor after visitor after visitor. They ruined our town with modern architecture. They ruined our town with modern architecture. They ruined our town with modern- 75% of the people of America do not like modern architecture. And yet it seems like this city just can't get enough of it. Unless there is some kind of a communication at some point from the planning commission or from our design traditions that it cannot happen, it will always happen, because everybody wants it. And if you could take all the homes in Carmel and turn them into modern, do you think you'd have what everybody talks about? In all of the ads, in all of the magazines, they say, "Everybody comes here for the old European architecture." That's said so many times. That's why they come here. That's why this is one of the most popular villages in the world. And you've got 62 residents that come in here from a neighborhood objecting to modern design, and now they're not, they haven't even been heard. You guys, I'm not feeling like the residents are being listened to here. So I don't think that what I'm saying is going to make any difference, but I'm just trying to help you understand how we see things from the standpoint of the common man. I met a guy on a train, you know, we were talking, and he said, "Neil, they did, we moved to this old town community, and we loved it, and some new business came in, and they wanted to do a modern design." He said, "You know, before they even got up to the, to speak, the people in the audience were saying, 'Get them out of here, get them out.'" And he said, "We still have our place, it's preserved." And he said, "They will never bring modern into our community." So modern is great in some places, but some places need to be without it, to have that character preserved. So I'll stop there, and apologies to Claudio, I think he's done a good job otherwise.
Thank you for your comments. If you'd like to make comment, please come up to the microphone.
If I may, Carol, could I ask you where do you live?
I live on the floors, I got a notice for it, on next street over, almost directly.
Can we come and speak at the microphone, please? Okay. Do you, do you have a comment for-
I have.
Okay, then please come to the microphone, make your comments, thank you.
I am very respectful of the other neighbors' concern, and I am a neighbor, and I live immediate, immediately to the north of this design. So the view that Claudio has talked about at large is my view. So we are just next to each other. And I saw your car stopping by the house today, and I was hoping to talk with you, but you're gone. But that's okay. So I'm here to say I support the approach that Claudio took to come to you today with this design, and I also support the design itself. I think it is more modern design, for sure, but it is attractive modern design. And I don't think it does not blend well with the current Carmel character. Carmel character is not like cookie cutter style. It has many different kinds of designs, including very modern design, which is a beautiful coast house designed by Frank Lloyd Wright. And if you tell me, who have raised my family in Maryland, which has many colonial designs everywhere, I would say the architect, the developer of Carmel 100 years ago, took a very modern design to design Carmel as it today. And if you go to Paris, the little pyramid right in front of roof is modern. Parisians did not like it at the beginning, which is designed by Aimé, but they took it, and now it's one of the icons of Paris. If go to Washington DC, he also designed the east wing of the National Gallery of Art. It did not fit with the National Mall, but it fits today. It's beautiful. So I appreciate Claudio's design because it has energy, not this one. Different picture. It has-
This one.
It has movement. It has classic modernism in it. So I'm in it, and I feel I would be very happy to see your design by my house next door. And thank you for your creativity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Yes, I don't see anybody online right now, so Claudio, if you want to come back up, sure.
I just want to say that I, you know, I talked to all my neighbors and made sure that they were happy and comfortable with the design, and I have their full support, all immediate neighbors that are impacted by that design. And just really briefly, I know that there's an issue with modernism and that type of architecture, but I think that there's a lack of understanding about modern architecture overall, because they're trying to shut down that architectural style, but there's different variations of modern architecture. You know, there's, there's some that are more organic, and some that are more international, and so on. There's some that are just boxes, and so there's a diversity of modern architecture that can be presented, and it's just a matter of having, having an open mind and really understanding what you're being presented with. And, and, you know, through history, if you look at architecture, architecture has been developed by, by different cultures and different- developed by, by different cultures and different needs of the people. You take a simple column that, you know, a Doric column that is simple in a sense, but it was a manifestation of columns from the Greek ancient architecture, and then that developed into an Ionic column, and then a Corinthian column, and so on. So to stop progression of architecture by saying that we don't want modern architecture is to stop the progression of architecture and our culture, because people that are coming to this area are not the same people that were here fifty and a hundred years ago. There's different needs, different cultures, different opinions, different intellectuals that come in and have different opinions of what they want. There's a lot of people that come from, as an example, from the Bay Area, and they want modern homes. Those are the people that are coming in here. So with times, you know, architecture is a window that shows how people are reacting in that period. And I just want to say that people should have an open mind as to what is being presented. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to the commission. And Commissioner Allen, would you like to start?
Yeah. So I actually appreciate what Neil and Carol bring, and I, I share a fondness for the architecture that, that they are promoting. Unfortunately, apparently, the people who are buying the homes here, a lot of them aren't feeling that way. And so the projects that come in front of us are a wide variety. And I, I'm torn because I feel like it's a free country, and if you want a house that fulfills the guidelines and, you know, and doesn't match up with what we would consider traditionally quintessential Carmel, I have to go with the fact that it's fulfilling the guidelines. I do feel in this case that the architect has done everything possible to include the neighbors and, and really go out of what we typically see and include them in the design, and has chosen the design specifically so that these neighbors can continue to enjoy their homes also. I'm not a big fan of excavation. I would normally not like to see that. And it concerns me when you have to start putting in large, high retaining walls. In this situation, I've watched it progress through the times that this project has come in front of us, and I gotta say that I am going to support it because I do feel like it's a very creative solution to a property that had a lot of challenges. And so I feel as if I would be able to move on with approval on this.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Alborn, would you like to comment?
Yeah. This is, I wasn't here in December when you discussed the project the first time, so I hope I didn't miss much of the discussion anyway. But this house is, is definitely something, you know, that, that is, especially the south elevation, I don't know if you discussed that, but it really looks like a ship. Like one of those big ships that, you know, ocean liners. And, and with the five-feet excavation, it's going to look like a stranded ship. I think it's, it's actually, it fits, it fits the ocean and the, and the area. I was concerned about the flat roofs, you know, my concerns are flat roofs, big windows, obviously. Flat roofs, I understand that it fits the design of the ship, and also the neighbors needed to preserve their views, which is wonderful. I, I was concerned initially about the size of the windows and doors because they are like eight-foot high, but then I realized that you only see like the top three feet of them. So that's the reason why they, you're not going to see them. They are all underground, so that, that doesn't impact the whole view of the house. The courtyard, again, big sliding doors, one is like sixteen feet long, the other one is twelve. You can argue making them smaller, but it's a courtyard. And the courtyard is really in my mind like a part of the house, it's like a room that is fenced off from all sides, nobody sees that but the people who live in the house. So I don't, I don't really have an issue with, with that, in that particular context. So yeah, it's, it's a very interesting house. I, I, it was not underground partially, I would say no way. Like with this big windows, eight-foot windows, I would say no way, and with a flat roof. But because it's partially underground, it's like five feet underground, I, I think it's, it's very unique, and I wish we can find a way to approve it. I'm not sure if that's the final design that we want to go with, because I didn't have a chance to discuss it in December, but it is, it is something that definitely adds value to the, to the architectural heritage of town. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments on this? I think both of you did a nice job of summarizing my thoughts on it. Do want to point out that this is concept, and we do have the findings in our packet or conditions for the concept acceptance, and those include a tree density requirement. So this property had trees on it, and I appreciated your presentation as far as the trees go. Trees are no longer there, there's only one tree really remaining, and that's in the back, and it will be protected, it will not, there will be no excavation in its root zone area. And so there is a requirement, though, that the new landscape project include three upper and one lower tree as part of the staff recommendation. The plan consistency, as we discussed previously with site plan and whatever the two things were that we were talking about, and then the landscape plan, which had to do with the right-of-way area. So do we have a motion on this to approve the concept?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, how do I?
The concept, yeah.
The concept.
And staff.
As given, and staff, and staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I can stick on that, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, done, roll call.
Commissioner Alborn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kara Pickoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. Thank you. All right, thank you for that presentation. And now moving on, we are at DS 23005 Schwartz Young.
So this is a 6,000-square-foot site currently developed with a 2,045-square-foot residence. The applicant is proposing to maintain the existing residence. It's proposing an addition, which will result in a 2,465-square-foot residence, and is also proposing a new 300, or that includes a 372-square-foot attached garage. As part of the project, the applicant is also proposing a 800-square-foot attached ADU that will be done under a separate permit application. And then the applicant is also proposing site coverage and landscape modifications throughout. This site contains eleven trees on site, ten of which are significant, with one moderately significant tree. No trees are, no rated trees are proposed for removal, and there's also no tree planting requirement. One unrated four-inch oak is proposed to be removed to accommodate the new driveway, but again, no, none of the rated trees will be removed. As part of the project, this large swath of paving in the right-of-way for the existing driveway will be abandoned and replaced with landscaping throughout. This will be a fenced area that will be landscaped, and then in the foreground, in the right-of-way, new landscaping will be established. That's this area right in here. And then the driveway will be relocated to the garage, which is approximately underneath this existing landing. The driveway will be made up of a combination of a solid tire strip and then a space tire strip, so if you can imagine kind of a design that looks like this in combination with a design that looks like this. So it'll be a paver, a solid paver on one end with a kind of punctuated paver on the other side, and that'll be a nine-foot-wide driveway all the way across. So in respect to privacy and views, staff did not identify any privacy or view impacts associated with the project. We did receive one letter of support from a neighbor to the rear that was forwarded to the commission. That letter wasn't exactly clear where that neighbor was located. It referred to a neighbor on Monteverdi, or I believe it was Monteverdi, it referenced a property uphill to the rear. So that exact location wasn't exactly clear. However, that neighbor said that their views weren't impacted by the story poles. And that was the only correspondence we received regarding the project. Or, I'm sorry, then we received another correspondence from a neighbor on the other side of the street to the west who were also in support of the project. All of the additions are in the form of the dormer on the north slope of the roof, which is right here, or tucked behind the building. There is some modification to the deck railing, however, that is an existing deck that is proposed to remain, and then, as I mentioned, the ADU, which is a separate permit. And then looking at the, sorry, the top is proposed, bottom is existing. This is the view from the, I'm getting mixed up. This is the view from the south, and this is the view from the, no, this is south, this is north. North, south, I apologize for that. There are window replacements proposed throughout, however, you know, all of the windows are generally within the same locations as existing windows. Again, we have not received any correspondence regarding potential view impacts. And then we have that existing deck on the front that is proposed to remain in generally the same location. There is some minor tweaks to the dimensions, but the deck is actually proposed to get So we do have that new dormer on the north elevation. Our residential design guidelines do not give great standards regarding dormers. The design guidelines do say to limit the number of subordinate attachments such as dormers to avoid a cluttered design, and that dormer should relate to the mass bulk and scale of residence, of the residence, and should not be used to increase the mass of the structure. However, the zoning code nor design guidelines define a dormer nor give objective or subjective design standards. So there is this figure down here, this is taken from a book called The Field Guide of American Houses. That is not a city document, it's just a reference book that we have in our office to illustrate some examples of dormers. So what we're asking the planning commission to do is to determine the appropriateness of the scale and size of the dormer. Because the increase in size, it is included in floor area, so there is a way to capture the massing in a quantitative manner. However, we, again, we don't have a standard that says a dormer can only be, you know, X number of feet wide. It is just something to consider. Again, it is floor area, but there's no dimensional standards that.
Evan, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Do, do the draft design guidelines that are currently being prepared, do they address dormers at all?
Not to the extent that Evan's asking the question tonight as far as like the width of a dormer. There's, there's similar language in the draft about, you know, limiting dormers, making non-complex roof forms and things like that.
But it doesn't go into any detail?
It doesn't go into specific dormer design.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No problem. So again, we have it captured as floor area, but there's no dimensional standard regarding height, width, things of that nature. Again, as you saw on the tour, the dormer is well-screened, you don't see it from, really the site, from the right-of-way. It's not impacting any neighbors. We have another design guideline that, that states a building should appear no more than two stories from, two stories in height as viewed from the public right-of-way. The existing building is non-conforming, as it is three stories. So the, the first floor is highlighted in red, second floor is highlighted in blue, and then the third story is highlighted in green. It's actually an attic level because it is within the roof form of the building. The design guidelines pertaining, so what we're asking tonight is, is the existing change on the west elevation, does that increase the non-conforming appearance of the building? So as, as it reads in the design guidelines, does the alteration further increase the appearance of the mass of the structure? For example, is the window modification on the west elevation, does that make it appear to be more out of scale? So this is not a zoning issue, it's purely discretionary. So the commission could consider whether this feature is appropriate or inappropriate for the location. We do have more design guidelines that speak to windows size and scale within our final design guidelines. However, within the concept design guidelines, we do have that one that says the building should appear to be no more than two stories in height as viewed from the public right-of-way. And again, I'll just reiterate, it's not a zoning issue, the building's non-conforming, non-conforming buildings can be altered, it's just a discretionary decision as to whether it is appearing more, more three stories. And with that, staff recommends, and one more thing before I move on, I do not have recommendation regarding this action in the resolution, this is for your consideration. And with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution as described on the screen. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any other questions?
I have a question. The dormers, they, they have a function, right? They bring light into this attic level that is also going to be used. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not, they're not just for decorative purposes?
No, it's bringing light, light and space.
And the attic level's already being used, correct? As a, as a, like a, it's a, it's its own floor, correct?
Correct. It, it is accessible, however, if you, so right, you know, somewhere right in here, it basically gets cut off as a usable space, so by adding the dormer, some area within here becomes accessible.
Gotcha. Yep.
So that, that's where that addition in floor area comes in. There is a portion where it's not floor area, when you raise it up, it becomes floor area.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Evan, I have a question. I, and it relates to the proposed new deck, or the modification to the deck, or however, however that's properly phrased. In the design guidelines in 4.3 and 4.5, it talks about staggering setbacks and, and progression of spaces from, from the edge of the street. And I was curious why that didn't apply in this case? That, because the, the proposed deck seems to simply follow the, the lines of the exterior of, of the building without any staggering. And I did do a little research online. Is the architect here, is the architect a local?
The architect's online.
Online. The architect, Benjamin Schaefer, there's a previous project that was done, Alma Station The architect, Benjamin Schaefer, there's a previous project that was done, Alma Station in Menlo Park, that has, is a lovely example of some staggered setback with a deck, rather similar to this. And so could you speak to why perhaps that staggering doesn't apply for this particular project?
So the setback, or the deck is set back at least 15 feet. So you can see it, it's a partial plan, but this is the 15-foot setback between here and here. So there is a generous landscape buffer between the property line and then the deck.
Okay. And then the progression of spaces, you know, the bulk of the new, the new living space that will, you know, that is currently the carport, right? And then the deck is proceeding vertically completely over that space rather than being inset?
I think I would have to pull up the design guideline.
So the ADU is down below.
Yeah, the ADU is underneath the deck.
Yes.
And the deck will be over the top of the ADU.
Correct.
But it's a rather solid-looking physical structure.
The deck is actually less than what they have right now.
Right.
Correct.
So right now...
It's a big deck now.
Yeah, so right now, the deck that they have, it's actually going to, this new plan will decrease the size of the deck.
But that doesn't, appearance-wise, though, I'm not sure that I'm getting that, you know, because the current deck has a railing that we can see through, and, you know, there's light, and the proposed is, has a rather solid structure.
Well, let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll have more discussion about what we think of the deck rails.
In the meantime, what, which design guideline was it? And I can pull that up just so I can...
Good point.
I think you will know better than I, but I was looking at 4.5.
Okay, I'll look that up while we get the applicant on.
Thank you. Okay, you're done with your presentation? Sorry. Okay, thank you. And we have the architect online, is that correct? Okay.
Hello, can you hear?
Yeah, well, let's go, okay, so Mitch, is it Mitch that's... No, I'm sorry. Benjamin. All right, so Benjamin can speak first, and then we'll have you come up and... Okay, great.
Yeah, please, actually, I'm on Zoom, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks.
Great, well, I just wanted to say it's a real pleasure to be here, so thanks for having us. You know, Carmel's very special, and we've been very excited to work in the city. And I just wanted to quickly say thanks to Evan. We've been working on this project with him for the last two to three years, and he's been very helpful as we've gone through incarnations and to understand the design guidelines, so thank you. I, knowing that I was going to be remote, we put a lot of effort or time into providing quite a few project drawings with the application and narrating or writing a design narrative, and then the owner, the client, had a personal narrative as well. So I had proposed just a quick summary to summarize the history of the project and to go through that design narrative. But I think I would just ask if the commission feels like we've, the application has enough information, I would be happy to just kind of get right into addressing some of the questions that the commission has.
Well, you are absolutely welcome to do that, so... Does anybody feel we need a more comprehensive presentation on this at this point? No, go, why don't you go ahead?
Great.
Yeah.
So there's three points that I'd like to make. Two of them, I think Evan did a great job of presenting the project, two of them are in response or in additional information to two points he made, and then I'll talk about the deck. The first, just quickly about the dormer, the northern dormer, so there's two dormers on the project, there's a southern dormer, which is an existing condition. We are only proposing one new dormer to the north. And I think to answer questions, yes, that top floor is a usable space. It's a six-and-12 roof, which is essentially a 45-degree angle, and much of the existing space is actually not usable, meaning it's below head height. So at the low point, in any room you're at along the perimeter of that top floor, it's only three feet, which is about waist-high. So if you can imagine, it's pretty hard to use, to furnish, so we've worked pretty hard to create, and the only way to resolve that without reconstructing the roof, which we can't do because it's an existing non-conforming condition, is to introduce a dormer, which is, you know, quite common for this style of architecture and for, you know, gabled roofs. And I would say that we've worked really hard to isolate the dormer to a very specific section of the upper floor, proposed bathrooms, that the space currently now actually is non-conforming in relation to code. So building code requires, as you know, certain head heights, and the only way we can make those rooms work is to introduce this dormer. And we've worked really hard with Evan to try to screen it, meaning it's not visible from the street, and it's not visible as much as we know it from the neighbors' properties. We are, we do understand the design guidelines, but again, our interpretation of the guidelines related to kind of dormers is really the visibility of them. If they're not visible, then the kind of size of the dormer, at least as we understand it, is somewhat mute or moot. The, just want to kind of point out to the commissioners that, again, if you're passing along the street frontage of the house and you're looking at its bulk or its mass, that the dormers aren't visible, and that the, you know, when you're looking at the elevations, it might be a little misrepresenting that, that, you know, the dormer is visible. So I just want to point that out, happy to answer more questions. As far as the deck, and I apologize to the commissioner who asked about progression of spaces, I mean, we are in fact creating an additional progression of spaces, I think. I don't know if Evan's has the ability to pull up the project drawings, but if you're able to look at the cover sheet, G0.00, which has a rendering of that front facade as viewed from the street in 3D, there are, the progression of spaces in the design guidelines talks about not only the building, but the site as well, meaning the landscaping leading up to the building, and then the building kind of stepping back as it climbs up the hill. And so actually, even though we are filling in underneath that deck area, and it's correct to say that it will be more solid, we are introducing other elements. There's a front porch with a wood screen, and then there are two terracing planters that step down into the street, all with landscaping, that increase the kind of, you know, sequencing of spaces as the building transitions from landscape to actual built form up the hill. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Do we, anybody have any questions right now, or we'll go to our next? Okay, would you like to come forward? I'm sorry, and you are...
I'm Aaron, I'm a property owner.
Okay, great, yeah, if you want to...
I'm the Schwartz, so Schwartz and Young, it should be Young, Schwartz.
Sure.
Also, the deck has a glass facade, so I don't know if that was clear in the drawing, but I know you made a comment about the light, and so that was actually very important to us because we also want to be able to see out of there. So property owner, we moved in in 2021. We had a, during a very hard time of COVID, a wonderful, wonderful experience down here. My wife grew up in the Bay. Her parents have been, had owned a couple different spots in Carmel Woods since the early 90s, all their memories are there. We got married at a Cee-Lah Mar. Very excited about this, obviously, it's taken us a while to kind of figure it out. Evan, thanks for your help. The upstairs, a lot of it I've got my head on, like genuinely, I can't walk into one of the bathrooms in our bedroom, and so the dormers is obviously very useful. I'm not that tall, I'm like six foot two. But that is, there's the primary bedroom, our kid's bedroom, the bedroom my father-in-law currently sleeps in, are all upstairs, so like, most of the living is upstairs. The ADU is all about, my in-laws having a space, they ended up selling their Carmel Woods house, but retired and helping us with the kids now, but have intentions of moving down here. I don't know, that's it, not much else, I just want to say thank you. This has been a very fun project.
Great, thank you. So before you go...
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for the property owner here? Because I know that, you know, he can also answer these things. Anybody? No? Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm good at this point, so thank you for your input. Would anybody like to comment on this item that is in the room right now? There are very few of us, but, all right? Okay, and we, yes, and then we have Mitch Tureka, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, thanks for having me. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person, someone said earlier, they're not experts at reading design plans, and nor am I. And I am the house that is directly next door, so as you're looking at the house and the pictures that were shown, I am the one directly to the left. And love our neighbors, very happy for them to continue to add beauty to the street. I did have a question on the windows, though. Those windows look directly into our home. When we did our project two years ago, oh gosh, now almost three years ago, we planted a hedge that was fully approved in the plans to do our best to create some privacy because those windows, as they are today, look directly into the house. I wasn't sure, and I'm sorry if you went quickly and I didn't hear, are there new windows in this new addition that will look directly down in, more down into our home? And is there anything that is being considered in the landscape plan to add landscaping along that fence line to, you know, discourage those windows from looking directly into ours? So that would be all, and again, excited for more beautification on the street and excited for this plan to go through, but am concerned there and would wanted to get some clarity, please. Thank you.
So you are the neighbor to the north, is that correct?
I'm sorry, say it one more time, please.
You're the neighbor to the north.
To the north, you got it right. That's absolutely right, the one that's, yep, you got it, thank you for us.
Would you like to respond to that question? Oh, Ben, okay, Ben, do you, can you respond to that? You need to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
I don't know if Evan is able to pull up A304, which is the northern elevation of the house, it makes it very clear. So there are two floor, there's a basement level, which is, any view out of the basement is completely covered by the existing fence line that separates the two properties, and then there are two floors above. The second floor has, existing condition, has three windows. We are proposing three windows, so there's no change in number of windows, and in fact, we haven't done calculations, but the glazing area, just eyeballing it, is about the same as, or less than what exists now. Those are windows that potentially could look over the fence line. And then the third floor, which is where the dormer is proposed, there, excuse me, there is an existing window already. We are proposing two additional windows in that dormer, but they are very small. Both of those windows are supporting light for a bathroom, or two bathrooms, excuse me, and they are basically about waist-high, and the eve comes down and covers almost half of the glazing. So there is a slight increase in glazing, if you look at it as an area calculation between existing and new, but no, not much more than what already currently exists.
Thank you.
They are in different places. So, so that, so I have a couple of questions about that. So when you're upstairs on that top floor and you're looking out those windows with the dormers, or with the proposed dormer, what are you seeing? Like into the neighbor's house?
Thank you. I think one important feature is that the elevation of the two properties between each other, I don't know the exact number, we don't have a survey, but there's probably at least a 15-foot grade drop between, meaning our property is higher than their property. So when you're standing on that third floor and you're looking straight out, you're looking over the neighbor's property. In fact, you would have to look down onto it. And my sense is you'd be looking at their roof.
Okay, so then you've also changed the position, it looks like, of the windows in that middle floor? And so are you changing them to align with their windows or opposite of their, like, is it now, is it now creating an issue?
The windows are modified on that middle floor simply to support the interior program. It has nothing to do with the neighbor's property.
Okay, so that doesn't answer my question, sorry. What I'm asking you is, the change that is occurring, is that causing more of an issue for the neighbor?
My response would be no, simply because, again, we're not increasing glazing area, so the openings, if you, if you take the totality of how much area you're looking, you're able to look out on, it's, it's the same, if not less. And then the windows only slightly shift, and so the, like, there's no feature, to my understanding, of the neighbor's to the north, that shifting the window, you know, three to four feet one way or the other would make it, would make the condition any less private.
Can you please speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry, the hedges that are there also go all the way across. I don't, I don't think it's blocked by hedges right now and then not blocked by hedges. I think it's still the same.
Okay, so this sounds like this may be something that needs to be addressed before we get to our final hearing on this, so. It's just being pointed out right now, you guys will probably need to look and see whether there is an impact and what needs to be fixed with that. Yes, go ahead.
Continuing with the windows, Evan, you brought up the, the windows on the, is it the west side, the front of the proposed design? And you mentioned some design guidelines about the scale of the windows.
Yes.
Could you speak to that a little bit more, please?
Yeah, so we have a design guideline and our concept design guidelines that speak to buildings appearing to be no more than three stories viewed from the street, and then our final design guidelines, there's some design guidelines that speak to the scale and massing of those windows. Sorry, I'm just going to try to navigate back to the PowerPoint.
And in your planning experience, how, I mean, how would you, where does your opinion fall in this particular case?
You know, it's really a discretionary decision, that's up to the planning commission in this.
Oh, nice answer.
We will have the discussion here.
Got it.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, well, so do we have any other questions that need to be directly answered by the applicant? Okay, good, then we'll bring it back for our discussion. Aaron, would you like to start?
Sure. So I am in support of the dormers. I believe that those are pretty much unseen from the street, so if it makes that one, or the top floor, you know, just easier for the family, I think that's fantastic. I would prefer to do a couple of things, and that is, I do feel that the proposed windows on that top floor now facing the front of the house actually accentuate that we're looking at a three-story building. And so I would like a revised version of those windows so that it's, it doesn't scream three stories. I would also be open to, if Mel is concerned about the deck, I would be open to entertaining that the, it would be a railing concept versus the solid with the glass insets. But otherwise, I think that's it, otherwise I'm supportive of it. I would just like it to not scream three stories.
Great, thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Aaron, for explaining very much what I'm thinking. I agree about the dormers, I think it's nice to be able to make use of attic spaces, and they're also super cool when you have children, you know? That said, I do think it's important that the line of sight out of those windows and all of the windows actually address the neighbor's concerns about privacy. I agree with Aaron's comments about the front-facing windows. They do appear to accentuate the volume and the large scale of the front face of the building, so I do think it would be nice if we saw... building, so I do think it would be nice if we saw a slight adjustment to that. And I would very much be in favor of a different material for the, for the deck. I feel that the existing deck does have a little bit more of a Carmel style with being able to see through that visual, there's a lightness to it. There's also a change in material. I think this might be an opportunity for the architect to consider bringing in a slightly different material so that to break up a little bit that rather large face that we're looking at and give a little bit more of those progression of spaces. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Stefan?
Yeah. So first, on the, on the positive side, there's logic in this project, right? Creating an ADU under the deck makes sense. It's very well executed based on the drawings here. Adding some space in the back, moving the garage on the side, removing this big chunk of concrete in front of the house is going to improve the carpet peel. It's going to look much better. The dormers are very practical. I think this is not the dormers we have been discussing in the past. In the past, we'll be discussing small decorative dormers that serve no other purpose but to make the roof very complicated and maybe get a little bit of light to a second story. This is completely different. This makes the space usable. Some of the dormers had, on the north side, had also skylights on them. I think that may be an overkill to have a skylight in a dormer. I'm not sure exactly. We have a chance to look at the house from the back. Maybe we should go and see how it looks from the north side and from the, I guess, from the east side and see where the dormers and the windows will be, because there may be some impact to the neighbors on that side. But we haven't received any comments from the neighbors, so that's, it's a big house, so we should think about it. The chimney is going away. That, that's how it's, has solved that problem here. The deck is huge. The deck is 500 square feet. I think right now it's not being, you know, the proposal is to use it in a different way than it is used now, right? So when you look at the drawings, it's more of a living area with sitting areas with a big table for 12 people or whatever. So it's really kind of an extension of the living space. That basically exposes more noise and light to the street. The neighbor on the other side of the street was in support. I think I saw a letter about that. It would be nice to see some neighbors in the room to talk about the whole thing, because this is a big house. This is going to have a huge impact on the street. And also the light pollution. Now, when you put so many windows on the front of the house, and these are all living areas, this is not, these are not bedrooms that will have heavy curtains and like dimmed light. This is living area that at 8:00 PM, there will be TVs running, there will be bright lights coming out of it. We need to think about the impact on the street from three levels of, imagine you have one family lives in the ADU on the first floor, then you have the main floor, and you have the kids upstairs, so I'm not sure exactly what's happening in the fourth floor. All of that at 8:00 PM at night, or at 9:00 PM when it's dark, all that generating light that's falling on the street, plus there may be some entertainment going on on the balcony or on the, on the front. So that, that is quite a lot for that street. So I haven't, when we were there today, I didn't really think about that scenario. I didn't realize the, kind of, the change that's going to happen. Maybe we need to go out again and look around the neighborhood and maybe, hopefully, talk to some of the neighbors, how that's going to impact their experience. I just don't want to make the mistake where we sign off on something and then it's, when it gets built, we're just disappointed by the results. And it's, yeah, it's easy to imagine that, you know, there will be quite a lot of light pollution from, from, from the street perspective. Everything else, you know, the ADU, the dormers, everything makes sense. The windows on the north side, I don't see a lot of difference unless the neighbor has some problems with the slight movement of the windows, but other than that, I don't see any problem with that. And was there anything else here? Dormer, ADU, exactly. And I'm very happy that the house is not going to be demolished or anything. It's going to be basically remodeled. The bones will stay. It's a solidly built house. It already has a, provides a very good quality of life, so I'm glad that it's going to stay there. It's just going to be improved. But we need to, again, we need to look at the, the front windows in terms of light pollution and also this feeling of a three-story house that Erin mentioned is something that concerns me. That would be my main, main concern here.
Thank you. Okay, so my comments on this, I agree with most of those comments. I think one thing we have to keep in mind is that this ADU, which is on the bottom floor, we don't have purview over. So the fact that that has windows that are looking out on the street, I'm not really sure that we have any authority to say anything about that. But given that, I think that I agree that the dormers, to me, are fine. The windows that are proposed for the upper floor create a lot of mass and bulk, and I think the way that this house, because this house is so large as it is from the perspective of the street, that when you do that, you're just raising people's eyes up to that upper floor. And the way it is right now, it's actually really cute. I mean, sorry, but that, that word is what I would say. I mean, it's...
You love it, not a condition.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, it's a neat house. It's got bones. And so I think I'd want to find a way to work with what you've got on that. So dormer's no problem. Bigger window, I personally do not like that because I think it's just too much. The deck railing, so the size of the, the current deck is how big? Do you recall?
500 square feet. 20 by 25, I think.
It's actually going to a smaller area.
Because you can see it here.
Right. And so, I mean, I can totally understand it, this is a family space, your barbecue, and I, you know, I saw that on there. I don't think that there's a problem with the size of that deck area because it is over the ADU. But I would like to see some kind of railing that's more open, so it's, it's not just a solid piece in front of us.
No turf on the...
No turf. But, but I think, you know, overall, the concept is really great, and you've got to reach out to this neighbor to the north and double-check all the windows. And so this is concept, so we're just telling you, giving you feedback right now.
Just making all that feedback.
Yeah, and so what we'll be looking for when you come back for your final design is the communication with the neighbor and perhaps opening up, I mean, that's, I think everybody's recommendation here is to open up that, look at that upper window and shrink it down. And, yeah, and I think that's...
So we, if we, I know we're talking about, you know, opening and making more transparent the railing, but if we close the railing, then the windows will look five feet tall, not eight feet tall, the ones on the second floor. And maybe on the third floor, if there is some kind of a decorative balcony, like a, not really deep, just decorative, to hide the lower part of the windows, they will, they will look exactly as the existing. Yeah, I think if we have a little bit of a, like a railing on the top to close, maybe to cover three feet from the windows.
But that's on the third floor.
Yeah. That would reduce the, reduce the...
Suggesting some way to reduce the, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, there is a decorative balcony on the middle one, and then on the two sides, there is no balcony.
It's transparent, right? It's like a railing?
It just looks like a railing.
I believe it's like a Juliet balcony.
So, Commissioner...
But we're thinking more of a solid, something that, that would reduce the amount of glass.
Is this for the upstairs?
For the, yes, for the third story.
Will you play the role in that?
Yeah, and I'm...
We just, we will not do, but it's...
We're going to ask you to keep playing with that.
So, Commissioner Locke, if I heard you correctly, in the existing structure, you find charm in how the windows are currently?
I do.
I do, too.
Yeah.
So I just want to give you that heads up.
Yeah, I think if you could work with what you have, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
And no, we'll just, I'm sorry, we're done with the public comment right now. This is just, we're going to let you go back and figure out how to make it all work.
There's only, we did have letters from the neighbor...
Yes.
Behind, so, and then across the street, we have a writing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think our only concern is the neighbor to the north right now who commented this evening, so that's... Okay, so do we want to move forward with the concept and the, the, yeah, let's see.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's really no special conditions on this, other than...
Well, so special conditions are railing, right?
Yeah, I think we're adding these things, yes.
Oh, yeah, we are. Okay. So we're going with staff recommendation and then adding special conditions around window size.
For the third-story window.
In the west-facing.
West-facing, yes, west elevation.
And then the, and then the railing on the deck.
And the deck railing. And then working with the north neighbor.
And working with the...
To make sure that there's no...
Correct.
Privacy issues.
Yeah.
Double-checking of that.
Yeah.
Is that a good enough emotion? Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I was going to ask for clarification.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it just general direction to work with staff on those three items?
Those are, well, those are, those are the things we'd like to see.
Revised?
Revised, just part...
I just didn't hear specific direction.
Yes. We were looking for, for revisions to those three things.
Okay.
So the deck rail, the third-story window, and the...
I guess, for example...
Privacy.
With, with the railing, there wasn't direction to return with a specific alternative?
No, we did not say anything specific on that.
But, Madam Chair, could I offer, I believe, though, what I heard during the deliberation from, deliberation from the planning commission was finding ways to, you know, lighten up that railing.
Yes.
I think that's what Evan's looking for, is direction, what, what direction to work with the applicant.
Open it up, so that it is not just a stucco or whatever.
And then on the windows, I believe the overall direction from the planning commission was to reduce the scale of the windows on the third floor. Is that fair? Okay, so I think that, that's what you're looking for, right, Evan?
Thank you.
And to work with the neighbor.
And work with the neighbor.
This is part of the job, is translating.
Yes, very good, very good, Brandon.
Exactly.
You've done well. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Albert?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Keripikoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Moving on.
You guys, you got your crank on.
Yeah. We're good. All right, DS 24289, your golden key number one.
Golden key.
In the golden rectangle.
Your golden key is number one, concept design study. It's, this is for a full demo of the existing home and detached garage and the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage. There is an ADU, there'll be a component of it, but that is not part of this permit. So the lot is roughly 6,000 square feet. Existing home, roughly 1,500 square feet with a lot of site coverage. They're currently out of compliance, but that is going to be brought into compliance as a part of this project. You can see the proposed project. There's going to be tire path to get use of the attached garage, the two-story section of the property. The bottom right there is the ADU, and then the extension of the main dwelling is at the back slash top, if you're kind of looking at it from this orientation. They're bringing the site coverage down to 764, which I believe the maximum allowed was 774, roughly, I believe, yeah, the data table's on the next page, so we can look at that. They're all within their allotments for floor area and site coverage and setbacks and all of that. Here's the data table. We can go back to it if we need reference later on, but just wanted to include that to show all the numbers. For forest character, there is currently nine trees on the property or adjacent. One of the trees is actually on the rear neighbor's property. Six coastal live oaks and one Monterey pine that have been deemed significant, one coastal oak that has been deemed moderately significant, and one pine that is deemed not significant. There's no trees that are being proposed to be removed. As of the time of the preliminary site assessment at the beginning of the project over a year ago, there was a requirement for the recommended tree density, having two more upper canopy trees. I do have a condition that we would require they show the planting of two more upper canopy trees. But it is a fairly forested site, so I also wanted to meet with the forester and go off their recommendation, but we have a condition set up already in place for that. Privacy and views, we didn't actually have any neighbors reach out with concerns about this, which can be a little atypical for going one story to two stories, but as you can see from the east elevation, a large portion of the two-story element won't have windows, where you can see the gable right there. There are some windows at the rear, all with mountains and matching with the rest of the windows of the house. Similarly, with the west side, there's a few additional windows at the upper level for bedroom and restroom, and one at the rear, or at the front in the living space, but not a lot, and we haven't had any concerns expressed about privacy and views. It's on a hill sloping downwards towards the Carmel crossroads and the barnyard in that area, going down 13th, and the neighbor, which you've seen their project previously, the Henley project, hasn't expressed any concerns about view blocking or anything like that, so hasn't been something that I've encountered yet. And finally, the south elevation, I want to look at all the elevations that were facing neighbors for privacy and views. The two-story element is set back. It's more kind of basically the dead center of the property, and then it tapers down to single-story elements as you get further back on the property. So the small balcony and the windows at the rear would be set back a good distance from the rear property line. There's also some proposed vegetative screening. As you can see, it's the icy blue podocarpus, I think that's right. So some big hedges are being planned, proposed for the rear section of the west, east, and south portions of the parcel. This will help with some screening. I know I was, I hadn't, well, I didn't have actually direct correspondence with the neighbors. Claudio CC'd me and kept me in the loop in his correspondence with them, where he sent some mock-ups of what the vegetation would look like, and there was no, no concerns by neighbors were raised. I did mention here that we, they've used the hedges in conjunction with the existing trees, so it's just kind of a natural vegetative barrier going around the whole property. For mass and bulk, you can see here it's gone from one-story to a two-story element. It is set back from the street 30 feet, so I don't believe it'll be looming over the right-of-way, which is a concern that is addressed in the, or something that is raised in the design guidelines that I believe they've addressed with the setbacks. Building and roof form, this is the one spot that I did say that I just, I didn't have a recommendation, but I just posited that you guys might want to discuss it, just it's a little bit complicated roof form-wise. The design guidelines do ask for simple roofs. It does also call out wanting secondary volumes to appear attached to primary forms and use roof height breaks to break up the massing of a structure. So I can see how this property has done that. There's a lot of them, so it might be, if you guys recommend it, consolidate them. They're all at a five and 12 pitch, so it's all the same pitch, which is nice for the uniformity, but there are more breaks than you see in a typical, just simple house. So something to consider. With that, I'm recommending you adopt the resolution, accepting the concept design. And I have, here for any questions. and I have, here for any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, Claudio, would you like to give us a presentation, and thank you very much for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Jacob, for the presentation. So, first of all, I want to talk about how we came, how we came about with the design, and, you know, the concept was to put an ADU in a single-family dwelling, and so, the idea, even though it's a large lot, the front half of the lot is, you know, occupied with several good-sized trees. So, that started giving us some direction on how to place building on the property, and so what we, what I did is, they pretty much split the property in half, and the west portion of it is where we place the ADU, on the east portion of it is where we place the main, single-family dwelling. So, that was the, the original concept, and understanding, you know, typical concerns with neighboring properties when we go two stories, you know, try to place a second story like I've done in a lot of my projects, to minimize any impacts with view sheds, shadows, and privacy and so on, although sometimes it's difficult when you, you put a second story to accommodate all those needs. I placed a second story in a manner that it was tucked in front of that one oak on the front of the property, there's a, there's a, as you approach the property, on your right-hand side, which is a northwest corner, there's an oak tree, and so I placed a second story, you know, close to it, to try to maintain that massing and bulk of that tree and kind of let that tree dominate the building mass. What that allowed me to do is, it places the second stories pretty much center in the property, to minimize any impacts to the neighboring property. Then, beyond that, to maintain, to maintain the privacy, on both east and west elevations, I minimized the amount of windows, therefore, if you look at the east elevation, there's hardly any windows on that facade looking onto the neighboring property, and that was done intentionally. I placed a master suite back there, and the master closet, I should say, to eliminate any windows looking onto, easterly to the neighboring property. Similar concept on the west elevation as well, minimize the size of windows, there is a high window in the bedroom, but it'll be, it'll be a better wall, so the window will be up high, and then there's a window in the bathroom, which I'm sure nobody's gonna use to hang out, anyway. So, that was the theory between the windows. So, most of the windows are designed to face south. The, I'm gonna jump into the next step, which is, after coming up with the design, I actually went and met with all the neighbors. I met with David and Darlene mostly, went to their property, looked at their patios, had a conversation with them, looked at the plan, reviewed the impacts, the impact, any impacts that we could have, they were happy with the concept, they're not, they're happy with the development, they just don't want to see a project, and I understand, but they're happy with the project and the overall, the fact that we're maintaining privacy and so on. One of the things that they did ask is, on my living room, although that second, that portion of the single-story building is not going to overwhelm their property, there is an opportunity for what I'm calling the sunroom, the extension of that living room, which was, it had nine-foot plate, and after talking with them and understanding their concerns and their, and their patios, and although they were not blocking any sunlight into their patio, they do have some open sky, and so, out of respect, I told them, you know, I'm willing to lower that sunroom another foot, you know, have standard eight-foot walls on that one room to, to open up more of their view. The netting is not representing that, but we can come back and put some yellow tape to illustrate that, but that broke the roof line even further on, on that wing of the, of the building, on the single-story, by lowering, lowering that section, so that's why you see a step on that section back, on the back of the property. Then I met with Judy Rogers, I went, I had a Zoom meeting with her. She has, she's directly to the south, she does have a patio looking back at our property. Now, the existing dwelling has, even though it's a single-story build, building, the way it's positioned on the, on the property, there's three, four, there's two windows and a sliding glass door and a deck looking onto her property, so she has no privacy whatsoever. Single-story, two-stories, there's just no privacy on her, on her property. She tried planting some trees in the past and wasn't successful, after talking to her, you know, I think, I think she's trying to plant something. But, what I told her is, and I showed her some, some diagrams, I took a picture of that, of her property, and then I illustrated our building superimposed on that photo, based on the netting that we have there, and then I told her that we're planting a hedge to block, to maintain the privacy, and she was happy with that concept. So, so she's happy and thrilled that the fact that we're gonna maintain her privacy, because she doesn't have it as of today. To the west, I also met with Margaret Montieth, if I'm pronouncing her name correctly, she has a good-sized property, I went to her property, we went out to the patio, we looked at the plans, and she was not concerned with privacy whatsoever, in fact, a little bit too concerning, because she was like, oh, it's fine, just build it, I'm like, whoa, but, you know, what happens if you sell the property, or your kids take it over, and, you know, and there's a window above and they're concerned about it, so I told her, we're gonna plant some hedge, just because we want to maintain our privacy to you, and I know you're not concerned, but I'm gonna put a hedge in there, so, so we're putting a hedge. So, she's happy with the concept to you as well. Lastly, I met with Fred Caldwell, who, who is southwest of our property, he has no issues at all, no privacy concern, there is a study with a high window, I took photos, I showed it to him, he goes, I'm not concerned about it, although I went back to the property with his permission, and I took some photos, and there's no privacy concerns whatsoever from that study window. He was more concerned about privacy concerns from his deck, which is on the opposite side of the building, on his southern side of the property, and I took some photos and emailed them to him, and you can't even see the netting whatsoever from that deck, so he's happy with the concept overall. So, although this is a second-story building, I mean, two-story building, and typically there's impacts with neighbors and privacy and so on, I mitigated all those issues, no neighbors are concerned about the design, the concept, in fact, they're happy that a new building's coming up and helping their properties and, you know, and so on. But, other than that, I was able to talk to all the neighbors, everybody seems to be happy with it, you know, the architectural style in keeping with the traditional styles of Carmel Cottage, Borden-Batten, wood materials, wood-clad windows, nothing that hasn't been approved in the past, so, you know, it's more traditional than my previous design. I didn't have to go to that extreme on this concept. So, having said that, I, you know, I'll, would love to answer any questions you may have, I'm hoping I can get support to move forward with the project, and thank you.
Thank you, Claudio, do we have questions?
I do, I do. So, well, first off, you're like the gold standard of.
Communication.
Neighbor accommodation, which is amazing, like, you should teach a course on it. But, so, as you were talking, then I got the impression that some of the complexity of the roof is to accommodate some of the neighbor.
Yes.
Situations.
Yes.
Is there a way of simplifying the roof any further, or do you feel like you really have to have it the way that it is to accommodate what we're doing with the neighbors?
To answer your, can I use the? So, to answer your question, I did look at the roof again and again to see if I can simplify it, and in a simple answer is no, very difficult, but I do have an idea of to get rid of one gable, and I'll show you. So, you can see. You can see the, this elevation here is that, has a shed roof over here, well, this is proposed.
Okay.
So, what I can do is extend the shed roof. Thank you. So, this is the, what we're proposing, and what I would like to do, or what we could do, to extend, I can extend that roof, that shed roof, and it would just simplify the roof, and I actually kinda like it.
Yep.
So, I can go up beyond that, but it would mean that I would have to introduce some flat roofs over here, which I don't think will be in keeping with the architecture, and that's going extreme, I'd rather not have a flat roof in that area, but that's one solution that I came up with without, you know, redesigning the entire structure and so on. So, that's something that I can definitely propose, and hopefully you'll accept.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Is there any member of the public online that would like to address the commission? All right, so we have a.
There's a hand up.
Yeah, there is a hand up, it's C, would you admit yourself and please make your comments?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Terry, I am part of the Family Limited Partnership that owns the Henley House, we are to the west of this project, and we actually had our design project confirmed a couple months ago. However, our design is based on getting two easements into our garage. We've worked with the neighbor to the north of us, who was very, very easy to work with, she understood that it was a small easement, it was insignificant, she had no problem signing it. We have tried working with Golden Key for almost nine months now to get this easement, we have been told they have no interest in speaking with us, that they only wanted to speak with us when they proposed their plans, we gave them easement documents for, from our easement attorney, and they asked for some change in language, which we did, and we sent back to them a couple weeks ago. We have not heard from them since, in working with them over this easement, it is a tiny pie slice of land, just so that we can pull a car in front of our detached garage. In the landscape plans they are presenting to you, they have screening in that easement now, disregarding our request for this easement. Our home was built in 1949, that garage has been there for over 70 years, with cars pulling in and pulling out of it, and, you know, I heard Claudio use our name, that, that we did not have any comments on this project, he has not talked to us about the project as he has the other neighbors, so, we are voicing concerns in just Carmel, neighborly, working together on plans, trying to, you know, work together as a neighborhood, which we did with all of our other neighbors, and we are just voicing concerns that we've been trying to work with this client, this owner of this home for nine months, to get a tiny pie, pie slice of an easement so we can move forward, and it's, they just ignore us, they don't return our calls, and it's just been very frustrating.
Thank you for your comments.
And I will say that also, the, the portion in front of our garage that we need the easement to, to pull into, a number of times when we go out there, their service vehicles are parked in it, so they use the land more than we use it.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, I actually was parked in your easement area when we went to the site this afternoon, I recall the, the discussion. I'm not sure if we have any.
Thanks, Madam Chair, you saw my face.
Yes.
I was just, I was just going to, you know, we always, we always encourage neighbors to work with each other, and be neighborly and all that stuff, however, I would, I would advise that the commission not to dip their toe into this, because this, one, isn't a requirement for approval of this project, the easement has no bearing on this project as a development project, and basically, long and short of it is, you, you can't require this property owner to work with another property owner for, for their benefit, so I think this is unfortunately a civil matter, we always encourage neighbors to work with each other, but relevant to the project in front of you right now, I would advise you not to, to weigh in on that matter.
Thank you, Brandon. All right. Thanks for your comments, and so we'll close the public hearing at this point, bring it back to our, oh, Claudio, would you like to make a comment finally? Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that I did not speak with her, I, what I said is I talked to David and Darlene mostly, to the, to the east, so I have not talked to them, I talked to her architect a few times, and they did send in an easement agreement, which was rejected because it was one-sided, it was pretty much they were taking over the land completely, and then we told them to reward it in a manner that it only should, that easement should only live there with the use of that garage, if the garage changes, then that easement should go away, so we had them revise it, they submitted that a couple of weeks ago, my clients are reviewing it, that's all I can say to them.
Yeah, and I think we've just said we're not.
I understand that, I just want to form the record, just clear, I'm staying out of the piece, I'm trying to keep the peace with everybody, but my point is, there's been some, there's a story behind it.
Okay. So, back to our commission for discussion, and.
Yeah, I don't have much comments, I mean, it's a very thoughtful design, we heard the story of the project, we understand why certain things are done in a certain way, Aaron managed to simplify the roof, so, it's perfect, yeah.
All right.
Excellent, yeah.
No, nothing? Aaron?
Yeah, I feel the same, let's go with the proposed.
Your proposed amendment.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion on this?
Sure, we, I would like to motion that we create a resolution for the adoption of this.
Concept?
Concept with staff's recommendation with the added feature that was presented by the architector, architect today with the new revised roof design.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albert?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Karapikoff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes, thank you, and I do believe that concludes our public hearings for today, and then we move on to our director's report.
Yeah, thank you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, not to give your report, but just, you know, to say thank you to this commission and all the commissioners before, it's been my pleasure to serve with you and now our one day together, but it really has been an honor, and I look forward to continuing to work with Anna and, and her, her role as the director, but thank you all very much for the time, and I will officially step down and let Anna give you the director's report.
Well, thank you, Brandon. So, just a couple of updates, one relative to regulations, we have a draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance that Evan has been working on, we plan to launch that out to public review in maybe a month or so, and then soon after, start scheduling workshops with the public to explain the, the draft regulations prior to, or concurrent with workshopping it with the Planning Commission. I don't have much else to update on regulations or planning and building and code enforcement, but just a quick recap of the last two weeks of my changed life. I've had the chance to meet a lot of new people, both staff, members of the public, and I'm excited to continue to do that. I look forward to sitting on the Planning Commission to help support you, as well as help support staff and members of the public to understand our complex regulations. And then next steps, I have a couple of meetings with the group of divisions that I'll be overseeing, and then also one-on-one meetings with staff, and also, we'll be reaching out to members of the public to, to get to know them and their thoughts and their vision of the city.
Well, welcome, Anna.
Thanks.
And thank you, Brandon, again. So, when we get to our agenda item at this point, future agenda items, I do have one question on that. There was the discussion tonight about landscaping, and basically, what kind of materials can be, you know, what are appropriate fire defense materials near the house, and I think that's really critically important that we focus in on that, because in the past, we've been very focused on things like woodchips, and woodchips may not be the best materials, so I do want to see something come up at some point on that, but I don't have anything else, does anybody else?
I have one comment.
Mm-hmm.
I have one comment, and it has to do with.
Stefan's mention of when we were discussing the deck, and you were mentioning size and noise and light, and I'm wondering if there's, if that is in the design guidelines, if there's more that could be understood, you know, are there some, are there guidelines to? You know, are there some, are there guidelines to size and noise and light? So, it doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item, but perhaps an educational item for Commissioner Alborn.
Good point, so, yeah. So we'll, we'll get back to you on that. Some of it does, I mean, as you've seen, a lot of things that do occur, we're looking at our guidelines and we're following code, but there's a lot of things that aren't necessarily called out, and so it's just using your best judgment on these things, too.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a similar discussion about a house on scenic, where they wanted to build a TV, you remember the one?
Outside, right.
They wanted to have a big deck, a fireplace, a huge TV to watch Super Bowl or whatever, and we compromised on not having the TV and keeping the fireplace.
Fireplace, right.
Because, you know, it's impacting neighbors. When you have large groups of people celebrating, partying all the time on the outside on the deck, it's impacting everybody in the area, so you have to be cautious about it. And also, light pollution, obviously, is always, with the big windows, we always talk about light pollution.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Yes? That's adjourned.